Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October fifteenth, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to start with the pledge, please. I'd like to start with a few announcements, please. The emergency exits are to your left and right. Restrooms are out the back door and to the left, and please be sure that you've signed in to the attendance sheet at the back table for this meeting, even if you're a developer and presenting an application. There are business cards at the back table as well with contact information through the Planning Department in case you need it. Also, on the back table is a copy of resolutions, are copies of the resolutions that will be read tonight along with the agenda. Please silence your cell phones so you don't interrupt those who are presenting to the board and conversations thereof. And also, please take any conversations you might like to have amongst yourselves out the back door and close the door behind you so that it doesn't disrupt the meeting as well. Thank you. What are the meeting minutes tonight? August twelfth, okay. Has everyone had a chance to look at the August twelfth meeting minutes? Any questions or comments? Al's looking at me. Okay, so Al's abstaining, otherwise, everyone else, okay. Entertained a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Move.
Joe moves, and Scott seconds, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, with one abstention. I'll receive correspondence, Manuel Dashon regarding the Galas in brown pool, in-ground pool. Boards and committee updates. Drew here, or Mike?
Mike.
I see Mike's here, so do you have any updates for us? Okay. And Keith?
Good evening. Keith Manard, project manager for the Town of Victor. So your next Planning Board meeting is Thursday because of early voting, October thirtieth at seven PM. The first new item on the agenda will be the Lehi Place PDD preliminary and final subdivision, 200 Victor Heights Parkway. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide, subdivide 24.154 parcels into three lots. Next item for the same project will be the Lehi Place PDD site plan, same address. Applicant is requesting approval to construct three four-story apartment buildings consisting of fifty-two units, and each one for a total of one hundred and fifty-six units. It will also consist of a clubhouse, pool, grill area, dog park, and open and covered parking areas. The third new item on the agenda, seventy-four oh four State Route ninety-six site plan. Applicant is requesting approval to convert an existing building into an art gallery. This is the house that would be to the south of the Thirsty Turtle, where the jewelry store used to be. The scope of work consists of converting the first floor into an art gallery space with additional two hundred and eighty square foot addition and a partial demolition of an existing garage structure to create a new space for a second-story deck. And then the final, the final new item is a final application for subdivision for the Niklov subdivision, and applicant is requesting approval to subdivide or to develop forty-two point four acres into seven lots with driveways coming off of Blazey Road. And this is the third step in their major subdivision process. Anybody have any questions, plus any carryovers from tonight, obviously?
Anything for Keith?
I'm sorry, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Just a note about tonight's agenda. The item, first item on the agenda, Norbit Solar Farm has been removed to a later meeting. And items six and seven, the Chick-fil-A Restaurant Discussion and the PGA Tour Superstore Discussion up at Cobblestone Court have also been withdrawn for a future meeting. So if you're here for any of those, you don't need to stay. Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge a couple of people. First of all, Ernie Santoro has been on the board for twenty-four and a half years, I think. He, this summer, was unable to continue his service on the board for personal reasons, but I wanted to make that note that we have very much appreciated his participation and contributions on the board, and we'll have more to say about that in future meeting. But to replace Ernie, the town board took some action to make some interviews of some candidates. And last night, they selected Tricia Turner, who is sitting over there next to Mike Guinan. She's observing today for probably obvious reasons. She's just gotten a ton of information about all the applications in front of us and wants to observe and see how the meetings go. But we certainly welcome Tricia and look forward to having you up here. She's had a long service for various town enterprises, including nine years plus on the school board. So she has a long dedicated history here, and we very much welcome that. So having said that, we can proceed with the meeting. And the first application up in front of us is Lehi Place PDD sketch subdivision. It's at 200 Victor Heights Parkway. Applicants requesting approval to subdivide the twenty-four point one five four acre parcel into three lots. Lot one, consisting of the Finger Lace Community College Building on six point six five acres. Lot two is the proposed apartment buildings on fourteen point two acres, and lot three will consist of the TLC daycare on three point two nine eight acres. This will be the first step of a major subdivision, and only acknowledgement of a completed application is being considered this evening, and it is not a public hearing at this time because it's a PDD sketch subdivision. So the applicant here. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. My name is Cole Papasergi. I'm with Marathon Engineering. With me today is Mark B. Felice with Auburn Trail Properties LLC.
Could you pick the microphone up a little bit? I'm not sure everyone can hear you. Thank you.
No problem. So as mentioned, we're here today for the sketch plan application portion of this. The board may be familiar with this project because we were in front of the board earlier this year. As the first part of the PDD process, we had requested rezoning from Light Industrial to this PDD, and we were successful in getting that, as well as Seeker was obtained in that process. So we're here in front of you today for the sketch plan approval for the subdivision, taking twenty-four acres into three distinct lots, subdividing it along Auburn Trail, or sorry, Victor Heights Parkway, and then along the lease line of the TLC Adventures Daycare. So that would leave the Lehi Place Residential Community, about fourteen acres, as previously discussed during the PDD process. I can talk more about the site plan if you want, or I can hold off. As Keith mentioned, we understand we'll be in front of the board later this month for site plan and preliminary final subdivision.
I'm sure we'll have plenty of opportunity for the board and the public to comment on that once it comes before us, so no need to dive into that. We have seen it once already, as I'm sure you're aware. So I guess what I'd like to do is open this up a little to the board, but start with Wes and see if you have any specific comments from a LaBella's perspective.
Thanks, Joe. So this is a sketch plan application or sketch plan drawing that we have in front of us tonight. So very, very minor type of action here, and actually, the planning board, the only action you're going to take might be to deem the application complete. So we're just looking at the division of the property itself. We're not looking at any physical improvements to the property. So, you know, given that, we don't have any substantive comments from LaBella at this point. We may have some comments on the preliminary final subdivision application, and then certainly the site plan. But for this sketch plan, no, nothing, nothing at this time.
All right, great. Thanks, Wes. Joe, questions for the applicant?
Nothing in particular. I did note that there's two observations from the code folks about the pond and the fence between lots two and three. I'm assuming those aren't going to be an issue when we come to moving forward with the sketch plan?
Yeah, I think there's, there's at least some ideas about how to deal with both of those, and we certainly have plenty of opportunity to comment on that once we see the preliminary plans. So it sounds more technical as a division thing than it is a site issue, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thanks. That's it for me.
Yep, Al?
Oh, no issues with the sketch plan, but to be consistent with when we were considering the PDD rezoning, I believe the density is inappropriate for the site, but from a sketch map perspective, I'll reserve further comment later.
Okay. Scott?
I guess the only question I had is, is there a mixed use proposed for the PDD? Do you have a variety of uses besides the student housing? There's another component to it, isn't there?
There is.
A daycare or something like that as part of it?
So the daycare in its existing use that is already located on the property. So the property has currently the FLCC campus and the TLC daycare on the east side of the campus. So there's a lease parcel setup that you can see as lot three on the east side there.
There's a, there's a laser, I think, in front of you if you want to use it?
So right here, this lot three, this is the existing daycare facility, and then the existing FLCC campus here. So there's a existing lease line here, but it is not a subdivided lot. So part of this subdivision is formalizing this as its own parcel, and then having a subdivision line along the roadway here to formalize the FLCC.
And the daycare parcel is part of the PDD, is that right?
I.
PDD zoning that you, that you got?
Yes, the whole parcel is part of the PDD zoning.
Okay. I'm just familiar with PDDs from a mixed-use perspective, and I suspected there was a mixed use here, and I just wanted to confirm that. So I have no questions beyond that.
Okay. As do I. It's just as Wes stated, it's pretty straightforward. We do have a resolution deeming as complete, and I'll read that now, and we can see you at the next meeting, I believe. Okay. So with this application, number zero-two-SK-2025, 200 Victor Heights Parkway, PDD sketch subdivision application, whereas the Planning Board made the following findings a fact, and there are six of them. Now therefore be it resolved that regarding the sketch plan application of Auburn Trails Properties LLC, major subdivision entitled Lehi Place PDD subdivision drawn by Marathon Engineering, dated September twenty-third, 2025, received by the Planning Board September twenty-fourth, 2025, Planning Board Application O-two-SK-2025, the Planning Board acknowledges receipt of a complete sketch plat application, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary forward a copy of this resolution to the applicant. On that resolution, do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Scott moves?
Second.
Joe seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried four-zero. See you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, the Galas In Ground Pool. And this is an open public hearing, as I said. Applicants requesting approval to install a fifteen-foot by thirty-five-foot gunite in-ground swimming pool. And this is over at seventy-eight eighty-five Hidden Oaks. The owner is Michael Galas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate you guys having us back. I know last time we had a few objectives that we needed to do, get the engineered drawings complete, which we did and submitted, and a few other items which were submitted as well.
Could you just state your name and?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Josh Schmider with Josh Landscape Company.
Thank you.
Yep.
Felice, she wants to?
Yeah, no problem.
Get it all right.
So you guys should have received the items that we had talked about last time?
That was at the last meeting, correct?
What you sent in was revised plans beginning of October.
Pardon me?
Revised plans beginning of October.
Yes, yep, yep. And the engineered stamped drawings should be included in that as well.
Okay. I guess, Wes, I'll start with you, as long as we were, I know we were looking at several items regarding like the retaining wall and some other perhaps geotechnical information.
Yeah. So I've got, you know, I've got one of the plan sheets up in front of me. I guess it's the layout and grading plan. I see that the, the pool drainage line has been extended likely beyond where the septic leach field is. So that's, I think that's helpful.
We also placed the, the septic leach field on the plan there as requested last time, so you guys would be able to note kind of that dotted line where the leach field is currently located.
Got it. Okay, okay.
So that, that drainage line will run beyond the leach field. That whole slope where the, the drainage line is running, that slopes down to kind of the gutter storm sewers where the yard naturally, all the water goes anyway. So we just had proposed getting it past the leach field, so that way there would be no risk or concern about it, you know, overloading that, that system.
Other thoughts, Wes?
Let me see here. Take your time. Does the updated plan, does the updated plan show the drainage behind the wall?
There should be, well, we have the, which wall are you talking, the Boulder Garden Wall there or the actual retaining wall?
The actual retaining wall.
We have the cutaway drawing that was submitted last time, which showed kind of the, the side profile detail, which includes drainage.
Okay. And is that gonna, okay, where is that drainage going to be?
So that, we just did weep holes in the front of the, the wall, because there really shouldn't be water coming through the face of that, that wall. It's just mainly to relieve hydrostatic pressure. The patio drains, which would be collecting the surface drains, or the, the surface water, that would be the drainage that runs. And actually, let me just double check. We may have ended up tying that wall drainage instead of the.
Well, maybe I do see a.
We may have ran that into our drain system also. Let me just double check. Yeah, above the, the Boulder Garden Wall, that dotted line is showing that drainage running out to daylight. The pool wall, there's really no drainage behind the pool portion of the wall, because that's the actual swimming pool. And then I guess, at least on this plan, the, the cutaway drawing shows the drainage, but I don't think we have a dotted line showing it on the plan view overview drawing, but it is on the cutaway drawing showing the, the detail of the, the wall.
All right. Did, by chance, did your engineer provide any information on the Boulder retaining wall to, to confirm that, you know, the size is sufficient? Anything more than what you described at the last meeting?
We didn't leave with a takeaway to have him do that. I guess that wasn't on our notes to request.
Maybe we had a bit of a conversation in, correct me if I'm wrong, I might have misunderstood some of what was expressed at the last meeting. But we had some geotechnical concerns with the soils and the amount of elevation change that was above that wall. And you went into some detail about how, you know, minimal, there's going to be minimal cut-in to the, to the slope there.
Correct. So I definitely remember that conversation as well. And the concern from what we took away from that meeting was you looked at those Boulder walls and thought we were carving into the hillside and using that as structural retaining walls. And once I explained that the elevation of the patio area is at the current elevation of existing soil, and we were using those boulders as a garden wall just to keep mulch and whatnot from just spilling onto the patio, the understanding that we had was that it really wasn't a concern anymore because you guys realized it wasn't an actual retaining wall to hold the hillside up. So that's what we took away and understood last meeting.
Yep, all right.
But if we misunderstood, I guess you guys will have to let us know.
Okay. So we haven't, LaBella hasn't provided an updated comment letter yet, but we will do that and confirm that our, our comments have been addressed. I appreciate the updated drawings with the, with the PE stamp on them. I guess, I guess that's it for us right at this point.
Okay. Joe, we'll start with you.
No, we've got everything that we asked for at the last meeting, so I'm happy.
Any issues with any of it? You're, you're happy with what's been provided?
Not at all. I think they've all been addressed.
Okay. Al?
I'm good as well.
All right. Scott?
I, I agree. They show the leach field now, and yes, it was my understanding, as you described, that the boulders were just, they're more in a decorative capacity.
More garden edge mulch retaining.
And then as a structural capacity.
Yep.
So I have no issues.
Yeah, it, it appears that way on the graphic from the previous plan set. I think the boulders on the uphill side, I believe you're talking about, from the, behind the concrete wall.
We could honestly not even show those and just keep them more decorative landscape and just not keep them part of the structural plan. If you guys would like us to take those off and just do them as more of a cobble boulder.
I think it'd be useful for codes when they're looking at the site to show that.
You know, make it more than it is, you know, but.
You're good. I thought it was a little unusual not having seen this, I wasn't at the last meeting, but that you don't have any place to step out of the pool where the waterfall is and that taller wall. It's not, there's no patio around the entire perimeter of the pool.
Yeah. And it's mainly because the, the hillside gently slopes up, and so we, we made the elevation flush here. And if we start, if, the reason we did that is if we put a patio up above, we would have had to carve that hillside back. So we talked to the homeowner about just leaving that natural planting, because right now it's just kind of brushy weeds and leaves and as a, as the woodland starts. So we proposed to them, don't do anything on the other sides of the pool, because then we will be carving into the hillside. And then those comments that were made last week are kind of chasing it up the hill. Then it does turn into that. And so that's why we only kept it on kind of that one side for those exact reasons, so.
It, it, it looks like it's at the deep end of the pool, if I'm not mistaken, from the sketch.
Correct. Yeah, the shallow end is where the patio is there. Yep.
Personally, I would, it's not an issue with what you guys have to change or anything, but I would have an issue with having a deep end there where you can't stand next to a wall where you can't grab onto and get out. It's a safety thing.
So this, this isn't showing the actual detail of the, the pool, as far as, we have some swimouts in the, so kind of those ledge swimouts, because code requires having either ladders in the deep end or the, the swimouts. So this is more of a placeholder for the pool itself. We have detail of the design for the permitting process to make sure that meets code when we get the permit from the swimouts and the ladders and all of that.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's interested that has a question for the applicant or the board regarding this application? If not, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Al moves?
Second.
Move seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So with that, it sounds like the board is in pretty good shape with how you've addressed everything, and appreciate that. So I will read the resolution for this application with glasses. Whereas the Planning Board made the following findings a fact, and this is regarding the Galas In Ground Pool, seventy-eight eighty-five Hidden Oaks, Application twenty-seven SB twenty-two five, there are seven of them, including LaBella Associates reviewed the site plan in a letter dated September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and provided comments. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Josh Landscape Company's site plan entitled Galas In Ground Pool, located in a limited development district received by the Planning Board August twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, last revised October second, twenty-twenty-five, Planning Board Application number twenty-seven SB twenty-two five, be approved of the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. One, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid. As for fee reimbursement, local law adopted twenty, November twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-six. Number two, that the comments from LaBella Associates dated September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five be addressed. Wes, did you say you had any other comments you might?
Uh, no, nothing further.
Okay, all right. Number three, that comments from code officer dated October sixth, twenty-twenty-five be addressed. Ongoing conditions that the site plan comply with Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards. Number two, the, should the underground water conditions be encountered during construction, the developer is to address the encroachment and impact to the underground water conditions to the satisfaction of the town engineer. And number three, that a building permit be obtained for the pool prior to installation, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. So on this resolution, do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Al moves?
I'll second.
And Scott seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried four-zero.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Just so I know the next steps, building permit would be the next process we'll work with the building department?
Right. You'll have to wrap up any outstanding comments with LaBella and code. We can do that administratively. I will meet it right.
Between?
Yep, between you and I. So, and then, do you have a building permitted?
Pardon me?
You don't have a building permitted yet?
Um, no, that was, that should have been dropped off. I believe it's sitting in your file or whatever, waiting for this to get approved, I think, was.
Yep. So we'll wrap it up between the two of us.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is the Walmart addition. This is, public hearing has been closed on this. The owner's Main Street Shop LLC at four forty-one Commerce Drive. Applicants requesting approval to construct one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four square foot addition to the northwest side of the existing building in place of existing asphalt. Online pickup and delivery area will increase their pickup spots from eight to twenty-four. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Mara McKenzie with Colliers Engineering and Design here representing Walmart. Yeah, as stated, we are having a proposed building expansion of one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four square feet in place of the existing asphalt at the rear of the store, which will bring the new square footage of the store up to one hundred and one thousand five hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet. We were last seen at the August twenty-sixth Planning Board meeting, and since we have submitted revised plans and addressed comments with LaBella, and I believe we need to address the comments that the building in, I'm sorry, the code enforcement officer made here tonight for approval for the building signage facade. And I can go over the summary of changes if we would like, or just?
I think a review would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So a summary of changes that we have submitted, specifically regarding the lighting plans. I don't know if we have digital of those, but they might be.
Suzie, can you go another? There should be after hours. There. Thank you. So regarding the lighting plan, we have fixtures along the southwest of the store, the back corner of the store.
There's a laser right in front of you. You can use that.
Yeah. So right back here, the light poles have shields on the back of the lights. I do have a detailed plan as well, if we want to bring that up to look at what that looks like. We had initially submitted a lighting plan that had, that mentioned motion sensors to kind of achieve this.
kind of achieve this after-hours plan, but we deemed that wasn't really going to achieve the desired result. The color temperature of the fixtures has been lowered to 3,000 K lumens. The flagpole light that was proposed facing upwards to highlight the flag has been removed from the design. And regarding the after-hours plan, we have the same plan as the regular lighting plan during store hours with shielding, and the lights will be dimmed to 75, down 75% to 25% brightness to achieve the general average of below .6 foot candles, as stated in the FEIS statement. And then the lights will be controlled by external controls provided by our lighting vendor, so it's not a manual switch on and off, it will be controlled to turn off, to, to dim to 25% brightness at 11:00 PM, and raise to full brightness at sunrise.
Is that a 25% reduction or 25%, it's 75% reduction?
Yes, 75% reduction.
Great, thank you. And I understand the poles were lowered to meet the existing 22-foot?
Yes, we did confirm that the poles are 25 feet with a three, so 22 with a three-foot base, yes, 22 feet. Existing, so we're not proposing any new light poles.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions? The applicant, Scott?
Um, maybe just a few. I, I see a, an email message here on some of the changes that you made to the lighting plan, including the change to 3,000 K, which I guess I understand from an industry perspective is a, is a positive thing to do. I'm, I'm just not real familiar with, what does the after-hours plan, could you just go into detail what the after-hours plan means and how it, what functions, in particular with the southwest corner that she just spoke about? So if I'm a resident living over there, what am I going to see differently after this project takes hold?
So during store hours, you will see the regular ones, but with like the after-hours plan, so I think the average is what I mean to say, is the average lighting level is 2.1, I want to say 2.56, and so it'll be lowered to .6. So it'll be much dimmer, but the entire lot will still be lit to an extent, but it'll be very dim, it'll be low visibility in the parking lot. Looking from above, it'll just be kind of a glow, I would say, it wouldn't be a full brightness. And then it does have shielding, so there shouldn't be much light spillage at all really from being the 35-foot retaining wall is back there, and the light poles now have a shield on like the back of the light. I do have a detail sheet if you want to.
And they have a shield because they're not cutoffs, or that's just an extra protection for?
It is an extra protection, they are full cutoff lights.
And how does this lighting compare with, I'll call it, the central lighting of the plaza? It's to the north of the Walmart building?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so.
That they keep running those lights all night long, to my understanding?
It does. I think it was talked about in our pre-apt meeting, that that was something that the board was looking into with Benderson, who have control over the rest of the plaza.
Are, are those lights brighter then, than the lights you're referring to? Are your lights are more dim?
My lights would be more dim.
I'm good.
Okay. Al?
No questions.
Okay. Joe?
I've got two. Relative to the, the flood lighting on the American flag, was that an upgrade or will there be no?
There was an upgrade, there are lights on the flag as of this time.
And then I'm looking at all those comments about the secret consistency. Doing the math, we're looking at the approximate 1% increase in square footage, is that about right? And if that's correct, do we consider that to be minor, and we don't need to take any further action, if you will, or comment? I, I kind of defer to Wes. In my, my opinion, it's minor, but I'd.
Yeah. I appreciate the question. So, yeah, if it is even a 1% increase in, in building square footage, it is very minimal based on what, what was in, what was approved as part of the finding statement. And, and actually, if you look, if you look at just the building addition alone and compare it to SEAKER thresholds for type 1 actions, type 2 actions, and unlisted actions, the building addition alone would be a type 2 action and presumed to not have a significant adverse environmental impact. So I think given, given in the location of where the addition is going, and that it's really related to internal operations of the building, it's not, I guess there's, there's a change in, in how services are provide, are provided, right? And it's just internal operations. So, you know, I, I think in my perspective, I see it as a minor change.
Hey, thanks. It's nice to know my gut kind of corresponds to the science, so.
I think there's, there's a little bit of a difference to this one, too, in that the project, you know, did go through the envi, a full environmental review with a final environmental impact statement. And, and I think that has a different flavor to SEAKER when you're looking at modifications of something that was examined so closely. I think the discussion that we're having tonight and, and the review was appropriate.
And the, the building size within the PDD was limited to any one facility being no more than 100,000 square feet. This bumps it up over that, but I think in everyone's opinion, it's, you don't see the addition, it's not affecting, we'll call it, impervious surfaces, it's not adding. It's pretty minor, as, as you've stated. It's closer to a 2% increase, but who's counting? And so I think that we can, we have the discretion to approve this, it's not adding to the front of the building, it's not out there in front of, you know.
It's not adding retail space.
Right, yeah. It's basically office space, as I understand it.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so it's functional inside, and with the other changes on the site, you know, they've more than complied, I think, to what I requested, and so I think as a wrap-up, I think we're doing pretty well with, with this review, and I don't hear any objections to it, so unless you have anything else, Wes, I think the lighting plan looks good, and?
Yeah, I appreciate the updated lighting plan, and we'll take a, we'll take a hard look at that before we sign off on, on, on the plan set. But that's, that's extremely helpful to, you know, match what was expected back, back in the day with the SEAKER findings.
Yeah, well, having been on the board back in the day.
Come on with the.
Yeah.
2006.
Yeah.
Relative to that and, and what you said, Joe, and it, was there a, a limit to the building size in the findings then of 100,000 square feet? There was?
Yeah.
So, and this would just be exceeding that slightly?
That's why you don't see a 200,000 square foot Walmart there.
Right, right.
As you might see in, say, Macedon or Canada.
Yeah, that agrees with my understanding as well, so we're, we're going slightly above that.
Yeah. But as we said, it's minor, and it's not an impact to the, to the development, the neighborhood, frankly.
I agree. I, I think all the more reason to have the discussion that we're having and not treat it as a type 2 action.
So, okay. I think we've concluded. Any comments that people have had? In which case, I will read the resolution on this, which you should have copies of. So for the Walmart addition, 441 Commerce Drive, Application 22 SB 2025, whereas the planning board made the following findings of fact, and there are 11 of them. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Justin Latier PE on behalf of Walmart Incorporated Site Plan entitled Walmart Edition, drawn by Colliers Engineering and Design, dated May 9th, 2025, received by the Planning Board July 3rd, 2025, last revised October 8th, 2025, Planning Board Application 22 SB 2025, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature. Number one is standard. Number two, that comments in a letter dated October 2nd, 2025, from the code enforcement officer be addressed. Number three, that comments in a letter dated October 2nd, 2025, from Labella Associates be addressed. Ongoing conditions, number one is standard, number two is also a standard, number three, that any exterior lighting be compliant to code and approved by the code enforcement officer. And number four, that a building permit be obtained prior to start of building construction, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. So with that motion, or with that resolution, I'll entertain a motion.
I do have, if there is something that could be added to the resolution.
Okay.
So it was a request by James Baglioli, I hope I'm saying his last name correctly.
You got it.
Representative of Benderson. He specifically stated to us during this process that as stated in the FEIS as well, under project history, sorry, under, yeah, under project history and purpose, need, and benefits of the proposed action, that it is stated that the, let's try to find it. Yes, that the associated development of 300,023, sorry, yeah, 300,023, 323,287 square feet of commercial space be approved with the condition of an individual building being no larger than 100,000 square feet, that that also be in the resolution, that we're raising that 323,000 square foot to, and I have it here somewhere written down.
Okay.
That final number.
Um, we have, let me read item two under the wherethes, which I went right by. And I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, but it says, it is the intent of the applicant to construct 1,974 square foot addition to the northwest side of the existing building in place of existing asphalt. Expansion will increase the total building area from 99,582 square feet to 101,556 square feet, exceeding the 100,000 square foot maximum footprint established in the town's final environmental impact statement and 2006 findings statement for the Route 96 to 51 corridor. The FEIS specifically identified a 100,000 square foot cap on individual retail building footprints as a mitigation measure to minimize visual, topographic, and community character impacts. The addition includes training space, break room, stock room, mothers' room, and a management office. As part of this proposal, the applicant also plans to reconfigure the existing online pickup and delivery area, increasing the number of designated parking spots from eight to 24 for that purpose, I think it is intention. Does that cover it, or?
I believe.
I think the, what you, you've described from Mr. Baglioli, he goes into a little bit more detail, because he's talking about the entire square footage of the, of the plaza, right?
Yes.
So I, I don't have a problem with adding the language that, that James has provided you to the resolution.
Correct.
Could you read it one more time?
Yeah, absolutely. Here, I have it in my LOI that I had submitted.
If there's a specific write-up that you can hand Lisa?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Absolutely, yeah.
She will put it in this resolution, and we could add it as a.
So Wes, I have a question for you. If this went through the FEIS process and we're, and we're looking at the findings and we're making these determinations, does that mean that SEAKER was already taken care of for the plaza and we're just amending it? Or how, how does SEAKER relate to what we're doing here?
Well, in this, in this particular instance, we have, the, the entire action, the, the lighting, the signage, and the building addition is all a type 2 action.
Okay.
So in, in that instance, I, I think, I think it depends on the extent of the addition, right? If, if it weren't going to be a, a type 2 action, if it were going to be unlisted, then I think maybe there's some sort, maybe we would supplement, you know, the SEAKER findings or make it, make a, have a new SEAKER resolution identifying how this project is consistent with the findings and, and make a SEAKER determination, you know, reaffirm, somehow reaffirm the SEAKER findings from 2006.
Okay, so then we are treating it as a type 2 action?
Yes. And, and, and as, as you know, and for the public's benefit, type 2 action has been determined by DEC to be, to not have a significant adverse impact on the environment.
I think we can add this to the wherethes. Perhaps Lisa added as an additional paragraph to number two?
Thank you.
Of course. The only thing I was wondering out loud in my head at least is, does the, you mentioned the 323,000 something square feet, we're actually increasing that?
The total, yes, the total square foot of all the retail space in the plaza that is owned by Benderson is raised.
And, and I believe that the statement, what you're providing, or what Mr. Baglioli did, was, or to make sure that no other building that isn't built yet has to be reduced by the same amount. In other words, there, there's a restaurant pad out there, we don't want to have you come back and say, well, we can only build 1,900 square feet less of a restaurant building.
Right, yes, yes.
For the public, I think this important nuance, I think.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, totally get it, glad to put it in.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. So having read all that and adding this paragraph into whereas number two, do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Now moves?
Second.
And Joe seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried four zero, so.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Number five, awaited all evening to say this, Bow Wow Dog Salon, 7235 State Route 96, owner 14 Island Holding, applicant is requesting approval to operate a dog grooming and kennel facility at an existing building. This would include 43 kennels, a grooming area, office space, and a fenced-in area. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm actually standing in for Christian Doerr, the architect who's done the, most of the submittals. He's out of town, but my name is Terry Shannon, I represent the building in terms of the lease and sale of it. I think we've got comments back, it looks like, from October 8th, from the town engineer and the, and the, I think in the building inspector as well, and we've addressed some of their concerns or questions. The submittal that we last gave made some additional comments on lighting, the turf in the back, the fence. I think he's got that site plan, should have some notes on it in terms of where the locations of that dark sky lighting will be installed.
Wes, questions, or have you had a opportunity to see how they've addressed?
I think one of the, one of the issues that I recall from the last planning board meeting was the issue of noise or sound. And what, what has, what have you proposed since the last meeting, if anything? Or what additional details have you provided the planning board to, that might address the sound?
So the fencing, obviously, we did some, we did some testing for the ZBA in terms of decibel testing on all the adjacencies, interior, outside, and the ZBA was very satisfied with those findings. As a matter of fact, a couple of ZBA members went onsite while we did it, and there was more, there was more noise from traffic than there was from the actual depiction of dogs barking. So to your point, Wes, the fencing will have, will have some soundproofing to it. In that, in that depiction, in the center core is the turf, but on, on the panels up there, you'll look at what they propose, eight-foot sections of fencing, and I believe the inserts are vinyl soundproofing. Is that correct, Mario?
Yeah.
So all that detail is on, on that fencing plan.
I was looking at that plan earlier, and it's, you call it mass-loaded vinyl, I assume it's like honeycomb that's filled in with foam of some sort?
I, I don't know the details of the material itself, it's just some sort of vinyl.
Okay.
Voice absorption.
When they say mass-loaded vinyl, I assume it's filled in with something, so.
Yeah.
I guess the height of the fence is a, a strong determination of deflecting the actual sound. So that would be in addition to the fact that the decibel levels weren't to a level that you would hear. We walked all the way back to Auburn Creek Apartments and stood in the corner on the border of that site, and we couldn't hear anything.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that something you have in terms of readings, those sound pressure level readings that you submitted?
Yeah, there are actually two different variations, one was an app.
Okay.
And the, I can't remember the levels, but we were getting more noise from birds and cars than we were from dogs.
Is that the major item, Wes?
Uh, that was, yeah, I think that was the major. Uh, that was, yeah, I think that was the major item that I recall from the planning board meeting, and I see that they've, they've addressed in writing LaBella's comments. So, we'll need to provide an update letter just to close the loop.
Okay.
To confirm that our, our comments have been addressed.
Okay.
Relative to those sound replies, is there something that someone did that could be certified by a design professional?
Actually, they didn't deem that necessary.
They being whom?
The ZBA.
Okay. Okay, I understand the zoning board, that was their finding, I'm speaking to the planning board here.
Right, I get it. I get it. I respect that.
Anything else, Scott?
No, that would be my only comment.
All right. Joe?
Yeah, I've got several. Question on the, I believe LaBella's comments about adequate drainage and the response is rainwater drains from the front of the property to the swale with the, the outdoor dog spaces in the rear of the building adjacent to the swale and the wetlands. What's to prevent rainwater or routine cleaning from keeping, you know, feces and urine from going off into the swale and the wetlands?
I, I would probably, we did talk about that to a point in terms of the maintenance and the ongoing day-to-day routines of picking up after the dogs. The toters will take the, will take the dog feces and they will, there's turf over there that's going to be installed and that will be cleaned, I don't know, I'll talk tomorrow about that.
What are you, what's the questions about cleaning? I guess I'm not really understanding.
Well, if, if things drain to the rear of the property, the grade goes back towards the swale, so the, the natural flow, if you will, of, of urine would be downhill along with the rainwater and potentially feces as well during cleaning operations. I'm curious what's to stop that from, from going downhill with the rainwater.
We were discussing possibly putting in some curbing and then tying it back into the storms, but we weren't 100% sure how things are necessary, what was necessary, I should say.
Would that do it, Wes?
I think what you're getting at is some sort of a disposal plan.
Or a barrier just to prevent it from?
I mean, looking at this also like from an agricultural project perspective, say with horses or other livestock, I mean, oftentimes a plan is put in, is identified as to what the process and procedure is for handling this type of waste. And I don't think, but I don't think routing it into the storm sewer is the correct way to handle it.
I agree. That, that's my first question, I don't know if we've got an adequate answer to it at this point.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking at the site plan here, and if, if you're anticipating putting in curbing or thinking about putting in curbing, whether that's to prevent surface water from entering into the area where the dog waste is going to be, that may be helpful and, and maybe your intent is to direct that surface drainage that's in the, in the parking lot into a, a storm system. If, if that's, if that's something that you want to do, then, then I will, we need to see that on the site plan, right? And, and maybe the plan, as it, as it's shown, doesn't address that to the adequacy that the planning board would feel comfortable in making an approval, that, that seems to be something that, that would need to be addressed if the planning board were going to, you know, approve the site plan. They need to know what the waste disposal is going to be, right? What's the waste disposal plan going to look like to assure that the surface water drainage isn't going to get into the waste and then drain into the wetland?
It would just be the liquid waste, not solid. Solid gets picked up. That helps.
Well, I don't think, my, my guess is that the planning board wouldn't want to see the liquid waste go into the wetland either.
I understand.
Yeah, I would think that might be a problem, given the proximity to adjacent neighborhood. So, I think I would agree that we at least have you prepare some sort of waste management plan, and if it requires curbing to assure that that is, I don't know how you, I'm just talking out loud, how do you, how do you catch runoff with a curbing? And where does it go? It'd have to get, I mean, if you think of someone in a car maintenance operation, they catch, you know, oil in a separator and all that kind of stuff, I don't know how you possibly treat this without putting it into the sanitary sewer.
Yeah.
Because when, when you clean it, I mean, how do you clean up dog urine if it's all over the impervious surface?
Soap and water, squeegee.
I'm sorry?
Soap water, excuse me, soap and water and some squeegees, usually how you.
And, and then where does it go?
I pack it up and dump it down the drain.
In a drain? That's what I'm hearing.
I, I think at minimum they should identify something like that as, so there's an expectation as to what, what's going on out here and if code enforcement goes out for some issue or whatever it may be, that there's something in writing that they can refer to.
Okay. So, if you could articulate that, let us know how you plan on maintaining the site. It gives codes an opportunity to address it, saying, hey, you're not in compliance with your plan, or it needs to be more robust if it's not working properly. So, I think we'd at least ask for that. And I'm not sure whether we need to see them back again if we can review that they have a waste plan that's manageable with, that LaBella can review.
Yeah, I, I feel like the, the plan is likely to change more and, and significantly enough that they ought to be back in front of the planning board.
Especially if it involves curbing and other changes in the...
Yeah, or if there's going to be a new tie-in to the sanitary sewer system somehow, I think we, I think we want to see that. And maybe it's a matter of having your design professional talk with, you know, LaBella or the Planning and Building Office to, to try to resolve this and come up with a, with a plan.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
That's all.
Okay, Al?
Nothing else.
All right. Honestly, those are, my two big things were sound and waste management, so I think what you're hearing is we would like to see that before we put a, forward a resolution to approve this. I think in general, you've got what you need for the rest of the site, and I think maintenance is a big thing with 40 dogs or however many are going to be running around out there that can generate quite a bit of waste. So, I don't think it's complicated to do this, but I think we certainly can make sure that the planning department, codes gets a chance to review it along with the engineer, and I think that's the only thing you'd need to address to come back. So, this is an open public hearing, I'm going to entertain closing it as long as, unless someone else from the audience or from the public has any comments. Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Okay.
Second.
And Joe moves, Al seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, the next two items are on the agenda, were taken, removed, Chick-fil-A, PGA Tour Superstore, number eight, Day Site Plan. This is an open public hearing, Strong Road, owner Jamie Day. Applicants requesting approval to construct a single-family home and a future barn on 56.735 acres. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tom Sutherland, I'm here with Lantec. I'd like to introduce the builders, Mauro and Karen Polidori. We're representing the Day family. Before I jump in, we're, we're seeking preliminary and final approval for this single house. To start off, this 56-acre property is on the corner of Dryer and Strong Road, currently undeveloped farmland. Now, we're proposing a single-family home with a driveway connection to Dryer Road. Utilities would include public water and electric at Dryer Road. As far as private goes, we'll have a private leach field, and we are racing time to try and get private gas as well, propane. And now, with the driveway being longer than 500 feet, we've added in the proper bypasses and truck turnarounds. And I reviewed and addressed comments received from the Town of Victor code enforcement, highway superintendent, fire marshal, as well as the town engineer comments that I received today, I've addressed those. I have a set of updated plans here, and I'm...
Are those different than what the planning department was able to get to us last Wednesday?
Yes. Yes.
Different?
Yep.
Okay.
Those are the ones you just sent in, correct?
I just sent them.
Yeah, there was no way I was getting those printed off in time.
That's okay.
It came in late.
Yep.
I just want to make sure what I'm looking at on my screen is current, which it's apparently not, so.
I received the comments at probably 2:00, I got back to the office at 3:00 and I was just...
Well, perhaps if you could highlight the changes that you had to make to that plan up on the screen? Is that the current or the old, old one?
That's the old one.
It's the old one. I have a set of, if you want to, if you want to look at this.
That's okay. If you, the changes probably aren't that drastic.
They're not.
Compared to what's showing up on the, on the...
Okay.
Changes that would be in the plan, I can run through them. So, first off, the, the entrance to Dryer Road was a little bit too steep, so I had about eight-foot separation between contours. I spread that out to be have 10-foot separation with a 10% slope. Another change would be along the leach field, I now have no grading over leach field, I still have the swales to direct water around the leach field, but there's no proposed grading over the top of it. The code enforcement mentioned that we need to show a topsoil pile, so the topsoil pile is to the east of the driveway, closer to the house.
So, that's shown on your new...
That is shown on the new plan, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that is all of the changes to the plan itself. The other comments were storm water management report, a contour that I had to connect to, connect back in, site distances, yeah, nothing, nothing major.
Okay, well, I'm sure that LaBella will review those in time. I was curious about the entrance grading to Dryer Road because, like as you indicated, it's quite steep.
Yep.
I get concerned because it's dropping off as much as it looks like it is, it's going to be difficult for some trucks and vehicles to get through, as you're, I'm sure you're aware, so I'm kind of surprised it's not flatter. I know you had to put some more fill in there, but...
Yeah, so, right now, it drops right off from the road, but with these contours in here, we are at a 10% slope. We do have, I believe, a 20-foot radius, 28-foot radius, so trucks will be able to do the turn and drive down in there.
All right. Mostly concerned about emergency equipment, but you could also get a flatbed or a moving truck trying to get in there. How wide is the driveway?
It is 14 feet.
14, okay. Okay, Wes, anything?
Yeah, so, the applicant's design professional did go through some of our comments. Number one, it would, we mentioned about the Iroquois Creek watershed, the project appears to exceed the threshold for design in accordance with the Iroquois Creek watershed packet for developers, so we're just asking for a storm water report in accordance with the Iroquois Creek watershed requirements. The driveway slope, sounds like he's lessening that slope there at the entrance from 12-point, 12 and a half percent to about 10%, which is within the town's design standards. The water service, we just wanted to be sure there was enough cover over top of the water service, there, there's a few ground surface depressions, and we just want to be sure that there's enough cover over the, the water service area. And then there's a, there's a couple of retaining walls proposed at the rear of the house, and, and do you know what those will be made of?
Yeah, they will be block and mortar. There is a detail, on the detail sheet to show that.
Okay, I might have missed that.
It will be designed by the manufacturer, but the detail, it is in there.
Okay.
Block and mortar.
Missed that. All right, and then the site distance, so they've indicated on the, on the subdivision plan, the site distance for the driveway, they've got over 1,000 feet to the east and over 1, 500 feet to the west. I'm not sure if those are switched, maybe you had...
So, I, I went back and, and did another measurement today, and they're over 1,000 feet east and west. I updated it to the plan.
Okay.
It's to the, to the west is roughly 1,200 feet to the intersection, 1,100, 1,200 feet, if I recall.
Yeah, I, we did a cursory desktop review, and it looks like the site distances for that driveway are, are okay. We don't have a problem with that. Perk test, it looked like, based on, I was looking at the perk test notes that LaBella had, and it looked like maybe they were done in a little bit different of a location versus where the septic system is proposed now?
No, the location, the location should be in the correct spot.
Okay.
The date for the, on the table on the details page, it was August and not September.
Okay.
That was more of a, all right, typo error.
Yeah. That's pretty much it.
Okay, well, you mentioned the perk test. I noticed there's some grading over the area where you're intending to put a leach field.
He's changed that now.
Okay, all right, that's the difference, okay.
Very used to working in the West where there's a raised system.
Okay.
So, I get spoiled when I do jobs out in Victor.
Okay, then, that answers my question. Scott, questions?
Well, just a couple of observations. One is it looks like you're moving a lot of earth, and I guess I thought it might be appropriate to have some soil compaction notes to go along with what's going on here.
Okay.
Maybe even a sequence of operations so that you identify how, how that rolls out in terms of the contractor stripping soil, stockpiling it, and putting it down and compacting it, because there are, by eye, there's a lot of earth being moved on this project.
Yep.
Relative to the storm water and what Wes was talking about, is there a storm water mitigation for roof runoff?
Uh, yes, we do have a roof leader and a pump in the basement, and that is, it is shown on the plan. It drains to the west of the house.
Wes, is there a requirement that they put in like a dry well or something like that in Town of Victor?
There, I think there is a dry well requirement, I'm not sure if it's applicable for, for this particular single-family development, but that, I could look at that. Let me see if I can pull it up.
I recall because I did one around the corner and they had me put one in.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, because you've got drainage going to daylight, I think, right there, right?
Yep.
But there's some, some provision in the code that I, I think, and you checked to be sure, but I think there's something that says that you're supposed to put it in a, some type of a structure for mitigation.
Oh, they've got gutter drains discharging all the way out, 120 feet away from the house. And I assume that's where the gutters drain as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I'll just leave that as an open question. Be checked out by the town.
Yeah, I mean, it does go in the general direction of the swale that is shown, at least on this drawing, around the southwest quadrant of the home, and then to the northwest. So, makes sense what they're doing, it certainly don't, you're not putting water where it's going to work its way back to the house. And it's got...
That's it.
Okay, Al?
I was just going to say, I think it's positive to have a single-family home on the 56-plus acres of the rolling terrain, which most of it's undisturbed, so let's rather see that than, you know, several houses go in there, so.
Yeah, okay.
And while there may be, you know, a fair amount of earthwork there, it looks like most of the property is undisturbed, so I'm, I'm good with it.
Yeah, Joe?
I agree, it's a beautiful property, and I think this is going to be a nice, a nice house. It's sited well, and I think, well done.
Back in the 80s, the vision was like Hiawatha Hills, I think, so this is quite different. So, yeah. Um, so yeah, I, I have no problem with your application, the nuances, you know, certainly can be worked out. Um, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up, up the floor if there's anyone here who has comments, questions for the applicant. Seeing none? Anything from online, I assume, Suzie? All right. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Joe moves?
Second.
And Al second, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing's closed. Um, any further thoughts, Wes, or, um?
So I've, I've got the town's design construction standards opened up here, so I'm looking at building and, building and lot storm drainage and talks about roof and basement drainage. Provision shall be made for disposing of roof and, roof and basement drainage into the storm sewer system. Uh, basement floors shall have, okay, so on special conditions where storm sewers are not available and topography permits, basement drainage may be conveyed to drainage swales if a budding or downstream properties will not be adversely affected. In such instances, the basement floor shall be des, designed above the project-designed flood elevation to prevent backup or flooding in the basement. And then there is a section here on dry wells. Dry wells shall be used for disposing of roof drainage where storm sewers are not available and soil conditions are suitable.
Right, that's the one.
Yep. So, unless, unless the planning board wants to provide a waiver, it, it appears to me Into the storm sewer system, so we don't have a storm sewer system, basement floors, where it prints basement drainage. This says basement drainage may be conveyed to drainage swales, but it seems like for, uh, roof drainage-
We gotta understand.
Dry wells. Unless you provide a waiver.
I, I think a waiver is appropriate just because when I looked at the perk results here, the, the soil is so sandy, so I don't think you have any issue. I think, I think if the soils were different, perhaps it might be the case, so I, I would be in favor of waiving that.
Okay.
And, and just a quick observation, um, on your detail sheet, the, um, driveway connection is a detail from the Town of Hamlin. You might want to change that.
Will do. But we do, we do do a lot of work in, uh-
You do, you do work in Hamlin, do you?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I hope they don't have our Victor standards over there.
I'll correct that.
Any other thoughts? Thank you, Wes, for finding that. Um, how would we address the, the, uh, swale versus dry well?
Uh, we could just, if, if there's a draft resolution prepared and you want to move forward with that, I might have a couple of additions based on some of the comments here. Number, we'd have the soil compaction, adding soil compaction notes, sequence of construction, and then we can add in here that the planning board chooses to waive the requirement for dry wells for roof drainage.
Okay. All right, I'm fine with that, so we can put that in a, address prior to chairman's signature on the plan, so number six perhaps?
Uh, let's see, if I'll try to deflect.
And you can, if you want to wing it or do it with, uh, Lisa later?
You can go ahead and read and I'll write.
Okay, we'll do that. If there's no objection, we'll move forward with this application. So, Day Site Plan Strong Road, Application 29SP 2025, whereas the planning board made the following findings effect, and there are 10 of them. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Jeffrey and Jamie Day Site Plan entitled Day Site Plan, drawn by Land Tech Servant and Planning, dated August 27th, 2025, received by the Planning Board, September 15th, 2025. Planning Board Application SP 29SP 2025, be approved with the following conditions, perhaps, Lisa, we ought to change the date of the revised site plan or add a statement about revised site plan having been received today? Um, conditions, uh, to be addressed prior to chairman's signature, uh, number one is standard, number two, that the comments in a letter dated September 24th, 2025, from the Highway Superintendent be addressed. Number three, that the comments in a letter dated October 2nd, 2025, from Code Officer be addressed. And these may have already been addressed, but-
Yep.
Formality. Uh, that the comments in a letter dated October 6th, 2025, from Fire Marshal be addressed. Number five, that the comments in a letter dated October 15th, from LaBella Associates be addressed. And Wes's?
Number six, that the soil compaction notes and a sequence of construction be added to the site plan. And, uh, I'm gonna, so with the waiver, I'm gonna add that as, just underneath paragraph 10, under whereas, and we're just gonna say now for, or now therefore be it resolved that the planning board waives the requirement for, uh, the dry well that would generally be required by the Design and Construction Standards related to, to roof drainage and then be it further resolved that the planning board approves, conditionally approves.
Put in after number 10, Lisa.
Yep.
I can help Lisa with that.
Yeah. Ongoing conditions, uh, number one is standard, two is standard, three is standard, and four is also standard, so, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. So with those modifications to your resolution in hand, do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Al moves?
Second.
And Joe seconds. Don't all speak at once, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried for zero.
Awesome, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, item number nine, Cobblestone Creek Country Club Pickleball Courts, 100 Cobble Creek Drive, applicants requesting approval for eight gravel parking spaces and the existing driveway to serve the existing pickleball courts. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Destro from BME Associates. Um, here with me representing the applicant, Cobblestone Creek LLC, is Tom Dow and Jim Barbado. Um, as mentioned, we are here for a site plan application for the Cobblestone Creek Country Club Pickleball Court area parking and driveway. Um, this proposal is for eight new gravel parking spaces to serve the existing Cobble, Cobblestone Creek, uh, Pickleball Court area, um, instead of, uh, parking on the adjacent lawn area, which the vehicles currently do today. The site plan also, um, documents the existing gravel driveway on the property that provides access to the pickleball courts, uh, via connection to County Road 9. Uh, no other improvements are proposed to the existing pickleball court area except for the proposed eight gravel parking spaces. This application was forwarded to the Ontario County DPW, uh, for their review of the existing gravel driveway. Um, the intent is for the existing gravel driveway to remain in its current condition. On October 10th, 2025, the Ontario County DPW issued an email response following their review of this proposal. Um, the DPW email states that the existing driveway can stay in its current configuration for the eight proposed gravel parking spaces, uh, without the need to obtain any additional highway permits. We did receive, uh, a couple minor comments from town staff to which we have responded to in a letter dated October 14th, 2025. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
I guess we'll start with board questions, Joe?
Is eight spots sufficient? Um, four courts, people play doubles, right? Potentially could have 16 players. Not everybody traveling in eight cars.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the input that, that's been received from, from-
I'm sorry?
That's the input that's been received from Cobblestone Creek, that it should be sufficient.
I agree with that, Joe, uh, in terms of, seems kind of light. I have feeling people will be parking on shoulder of the gravel driveway.
A lot of people in the community also have golf carts too, that they could drive over there as well.
Al?
Oh, no questions.
Scott?
I guess I got one question. Um, does the gravel driveway comply with, uh, the Victor standards for connection to a public highway?
It's been, it's in existing condition that was approved previously.
By the planning board?
Yes, I believe so.
Just, I think it's on. Just to clarify, I think the driveway has always been there in some way, shape, or form, but the driveway was rebuilt for the construction of an infinity pool by one of the residents and then was supposed to be removed and only part of it was removed. Um, and then in conjunction with the pickleball court, which is why we asked them to put it all together in a site plan and they graciously have done so for us. So no, to answer your question, the driveway was not approved by the planning board as in the-
So the driveway was put in specifically for construction of one of the adjacent residents up the hill?
Yes.
So otherwise, before that construction, that driveway was not there?
Correct.
All the way back to-
If you look at old aerials, it was like a two-rut kind of a-
Okay.
-driveway off of County Route 9.
Yeah. So, I, I had a similar concern about this. I think that current standards would require a paved driveway. And I'm not asking it paved the whole thing, but certainly paved to the parking spaces. It's, it's going to be a more formalized facility, public facility.
And, and I guess the question also becomes, you know, does it have adequate site distance? And I don't know if it does or doesn't, I suspect it does.
It's a pretty straight section.
So it did receive a, a permit from the DPW previously for a temporary permit for the previous, um, site work operations.
Well, it's a temporary, what, and the driveway, as Keith said, was proposed to be removed as part of that construction.
I'm pretty sure, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, um, to, to Ryan's point, the comments back on this application from the county are, didn't they say that you only had to pave it if it was more than eight spots?
Yes, they said, um, additional improvements may be necessary, um, if more than eight spots are proposed or events or other activities are planned in the future that will expand the current operations. But they're satisfied with the current proposal as is with the driveway.
Hi, Jim Barbado. Um, one more point is we don't plow that in the winter at all. It's really just seasonal use. Um, I live in the neighborhood, I don't use the pickleball courts a lot, but I do go by there very often. I never see more than three or four cars at a time. Um, I mean, it's not like a public park where you're seeing it overwhelmed with groups waiting to play pickleball. Um, it's by reservation and, um, is really getting, uh, pretty light use. I mean, if it's eight cars, that would be a lot, but we don't do any plowing in the winter, there's not a lot of heavy traffic on it. It's really just to access the pickleball there. And as Ryan stated, we do have a fair amount that live in the neighborhood, it may come by golf cart or another means.
I'm surprised the county didn't ask for a paved driveway entrance to a county highway, uh, one that's rated at 55 miles an hour.
Yeah, well, and you know, when we'd look at driveways, as we've discussed before, we've got the criteria in what, chapter 55, I think it is, and, you know, consideration of other cuts and what have you, and do we then as a board look at waiving that or how do we handle that? And I don't know where the other driveway cuts are based on this drawing.
Mm-hmm.
But that's a, that's in our regs.
I did ask Code Officer, um, because you did have that question, to be paved, and he said it did not have to be paved, but he didn't state what section. I can clarify that with him, but he said it, it didn't have to be paved. I don't know what his reasoning was.
I suppose another consideration is, what's the potential for growth here? I mean, I've seen a lot of pickleball courts go up and I think it's a very popular sport. Who's to say it's not going to be, you know, at least-
Well, apparently if the county says it needs more than, or if they say they need more than eight parking spaces, now they gotta pave it, at least from that response.
One more point too, is that there is, uh, a paved parking area by the pool with a, a lot of extra overflow parking, um, that there's a path that walks right down to the pickleball courts. So in the event that we did have some kind of reason that where there's a lot more cars, we're not going to have to try to cram all the cars there, they can park at the pool area and walk down.
I'd suggest that people are just going to park on the grass. You're not, they're not gonna, you're not, nobody's policing that for who's parking where. They'll come driving straight in and you'll get 10 or 12 cars there, uh, or golf carts. Um, if the pool is paved, why isn't this paved? That's my question. Why didn't they leave that thing all gravel? So, I, I'm struggling with relieving this of a requirement that the town has for driveways.
Is it a code requirement that it's paved?
I thought that was just implied by the, the code enforcement officer, so it did not need to be paved.
Um, when I asked Adam, he said it didn't have to be, but I can find out the code, what he was going back to and a reasoning why it didn't have to be.
Mm-hmm.
Prefer to avoid the expense of-
Understood.
-paving and putting it in. For our uses, it's working very well the way it is. Personally, even with just parking on the grass has been working okay. Um, we're adding the eight spots just because it, uh, you know, formalizes a little bit and makes it more convenient, but, um, it's been working fine the way it is.
And the portion within the DPW right-of-way is allowed to be gravel as well, so it would be a shame to have a gravel access and then transitioning to pavement within the property.
Where is it? You're saying within the county right-of-way it's allowed to be gravel or is it only because-
The county DPW has reviewed this application and they have no issues with the gravel driveway remaining as is under its current condition. The letter was, uh, provided in an email yesterday, I believe, Lisa. That was the court, well, you had received it first on October 10th from the county highway.
My only thought is, it says, I apologize for the delay, but it says, "They have no comments on the site plan." His only thought, uh, and this is Garrett Baisham or Baishime, um, "My only thought is making them widen the driveway if they ever expand the parking area or events that they hold at pickleball courts. Main reason is at a certain point, we would want to, them to be able to pull in and out of the driveway at the same time, rather than stopping and greatly impacting traffic on County Route 9. I believe the proposed plan at the moment with eight spaces is fine for the driveway in its current configuration, but would like them and the town to consider the widening of the access if this turns into anything larger than eight spaces in the future. Um, since the driveway is existing already, they do not need a highway permit." In other words, if you didn't change anything. Only one would need, only would need one if they were to replace the culvert pipe or widen the driveway. How wide is the driveway? Looks like it's about 12 feet-ish from the scale of the parking spaces. I don't know, it's, it's, it's puzzling that on a good, well-paved county route, county highway, you have a gravel driveway that makes it a difficult thing to get out onto with traffic, since it's gravel. All right, well, I could see putting a condition in here if that, if there's a need to expand parking, that this driveway be paved and that the, uh, entrance be widened.
But what's the slope like on it? Is the slope gentle, is it under-
It's relatively flat, it's very flat.
I don't know, Wes, do you have that? It's up on the screen. What are those four dark spaces?
Four cars.
Four cars parked on grass, yeah. They don't seem to have trouble parking on grass now. I assume that they need more than eight cars to park on grass some more.
Yes, again, we've limited to eight vehicles.
Yeah, with the expectation that the entrance is widened for cars ending and, and pave I mean, I appreciate the need to save some money where you can, but there are standards. Um, okay. This is a pub, public hearing? Um, anyone from the audience have any comments, questions, challenges, compliments? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move it.
Uh, Scott moves?
Second.
Joe seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing's closed. Um, Wes, any other thoughts or?
I don't have any thoughts. Uh, we didn't, this project wasn't referred to LaBella.
Okay.
But, well, I did, I did look up the connection access spacing while you guys were talking on the, oh, where did it go? Right, so the Chapter 55 access management for the Town of Victor, driveway alignment and spacing. The table D1 talks about collector and through local roads for posted speed limits 45 or greater. Your collector road is 440 feet of separation distance. And it appears that the driveway to the north might be somewhere in the vicinity of 170, 180 feet away. So what that's worth.
I wouldn't call that a, oh, okay, the collector road is County Route 9, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so the town's official map designates County Route 9 as a collector road.
Okay. Any entrance to it, there's some spacing requirements in the access management. Scott's pretty.
Well, I mean, I think from a reality standpoint, this is something that got created over time for the history that was mentioned. And I think by our action tonight, we legitimize this. And is that what we want to do? No prior approval, something was used here to access another feature. And I mean, I've seen these situations before. In a certain way, it's like a new driveway cut onto the road.
Anyone else have any thoughts? Al?
Well, that is existing and hasn't presented an issue, right? Traffic issue, safety issue.
Yeah. Okay.
So we're going to say that under current conditions, this is, this would be possibly okay. But then the moment this changes, then they're triggering site plan review?
Nobody's going to want to add another parking space there again because they don't want to pave it.
That includes parking on the lawn, like, you know.
Yeah. Refer it back to the planning board for updated site plan. How do we put that in here as a question? Yeah, I guess we'd have to make this an ongoing. So I would suggest adding a three line item saying that since the board recognizes that this is a, this does not meet town standards for driveway entrances, however, we're accepting the eight parking spaces. I'm winging this. On the condition that if in the future additional parking spaces are needed, that the driveway be updated to current town standards, including driveway width, entry width, and paved surface. At which point, the planning, the site plan should be referred back to the planning board for review. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would just put maybe a little more meat to it. It says if additional parking spaces needed, parking outside parking is limited to eight of the parking spaces.
All right, so that part of it. I was thinking if you put that in one, whereas is the limiting part, I guess we could add it in with the same, in the same note. If additional parking spaces, if additional parking.
Or just parking is limited to, outside parking is limited to eight of the gravel parking spaces.
All right. Is that an ongoing condition? Yeah, okay, so we'll make that part of the same one. Lisa, why don't we go to write this up?
Yes.
Review it? Okay. Sorry. Sorry. Okay. Any other thoughts or comments, questions?
Do we have to do, excuse me, do we have to do a waiver then on the town criteria?
Well, if it's, they're, the applicant's approach is that this is existing. We're not asking for a new, but we are asking for, or they are asking for eight parking, formalized parking spaces, gravel. So which part of it would you say is?
Well, I think, as I mentioned before, I think it's pretty much like a new driveway cut. So if it were a new driveway cut, it would require a waiver, right?
Yeah. I don't think we're.
You know, it depends on how the board feels. That's how I feel.
Yeah.
I would say if it was a recent driveway, right, last year or two, I'd say it's, consider it new. But if it's 20-ish years, I would consider pre-existing condition, in my opinion.
Keith, do you know where that, when that was built? When that construction was done with this driveway and then it was?
Like I said, I think the original culvert and cut was a long, long time ago. And then, yeah, Peter can answer it.
Oh, Peter Vars.
Yes.
Good evening.
I'm old enough to remember Cobblestone at the beginning. That was actually a construction hall road access when they were building the golf course. It was how they got up to, it was actually, excuse me, when they were starting building Section 2, which is where the cul-de-sac is, where what we call the pedestrian house is. That was a construction hall road up there so that they weren't disturbing the golf course. So that's, as Keith pointed out, it was originally kind of just a little bit of a farm road at best. But the curb cut was there. And then the other one is the curb cut for the Cobblestone House that's been there for decades, decades, decades. Okay?
Okay.
I've got some aerial photography here. We'll just take a quick look. I don't want to belabor this too long. So this is 2023. I could also bring up some, some more current aerials. But you can see, you can see here that the driveway existed there. If we go back to 2021, or this, yeah, 2021, you can see that the driveway really was improved, maybe provided some access to this house.
Yeah, access to put that pool in at that house. So again, they didn't have to go across the golf course or the person's front yard.
Yeah, but look at that, put turnarounds and everything up there.
Yeah, so you got, you got this whole driveway network up here. And if we go back further, right, so 2015, you can see this access here. We'll even go back further. We can go back to, right, 2000, what else have we got here? 2011, you can see the quality of the photo isn't, is quite as good. And then what's this? 2003. You can also see a little bit here. This isn't the greatest quality photo, but.
But the courts are just sitting there in no man's land.
And then I was going to try to go, you can almost see something in here, too. 1994.
Well, is that one you were?
You're going to pull that one up with the covered wagon next?
Yeah. Keep going back. 2003. Here's 2005. You can see that there is something going on. That might actually be silt fence. I don't know what that is right there.
But I think that's, that's helpful in justifying it, I think.
Yeah, okay. All right, so.
Okay.
As a pre-existing condition, they didn't always have the same use, obviously. Mostly construction, but now convenience as tennis courts or pickleball courts.
Okay.
All right, so if we put that condition, I guess, as number three, ongoing, as we just talked through, I think that should help us down the road. We'll see what happens.
And you were saying site distance was okay? There's no waiver for that?
Right.
Okay.
I believe so. We didn't analyze it, but it's a very straight shot there. I think we're all pretty familiar with that stretch of highway. So I don't believe there's an accident history at that driveway. So, okay. All right, with that, I guess I'll read the resolution and move forward. Cobblestone Creek Pickleball Courts, 100 Cobble Creek Drive, Application 30 SB 2025. Whereas the planning board made the following findings in fact. Number one, a site plan application was received on September 17th, 2025 from Cobblestone Creek LLC. My secretary of the planning board for a site plan entitled Cobblestone Creek Pickleball Courts. Intent of the applicant to request approval for eight gravel parking spaces and the existing driveway to serve, to serve the existing pickleball courts. And there are five more wheresses. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Cobblestone Creek LLC site plan entitled Cobblestone Creek CC Pickleball Courts drawn by BME Associates dated September, I don't know what they, it says, but.
It just says September.
September 2025, received by the planning board September 17th, 2025. Planning board application 30 SB 2025 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan. Number one, standard. Number two, the comments in letter dated September 30th, 2025 from code enforcement officer be addressed. Ongoing conditions. Number one is standard. Number two is standard. And number three, we're adding in, as we discussed in this conversation, so. And be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. And we'll send you a copy of that resolution before I sign it so that you can read it and understand what we're putting in here. So with that, do I hear a motion for approval as amended?
I'll move.
Joe moves?
Okay.
And Al seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried 4-0. Okay.
He's staying for Cheshire.
Well, don't sit down on my account. Okay, Cheshire Ridge Preliminary and Final Subdivision Owner New Club Inc. Applicants requesting approval to create two new single-family lots on .74 acres along the south side of Cheshire Ridge.
All right, as mentioned, we are seeking, here to seek preliminary and final subdivision approval for Cheshire Ridge. Located at Cobblestone Creek as well. This proposal is for a subdivision to create two new single-family lots on .74 acres. It's along the south side of Cheshire Ridge and in between 11 Cheshire Ridge and one Sheffield Court, one Sheffield Courts to the west. It's located within Cobblestone Creek subdivision and the property is zone residential dash two. Just to give a quick recap, preliminary subdivision approval for the overall Cobblestone Creek development was granted by the planning board on June 27th, 1989. The approval, which included 282 single-family lots, was granted under Section 281, which is now Section 278 of town law and Article 5 of the Town of Victor Town subdivision regulations. Now, while 282 single-family lots were approved, to date, only 270 single-family lots have been created. The existing adjoining lots were established, on either side of the two proposed lots, were established in 1997 as part of Section 4 of Cobblestone Creek Development. The proposed two single-family lots have been designed to meet all of the applicable bulk lot standards of the existing adjoining lots on either side as part of the Section 4 approval, except for lot depth. The minimum lot depth for the new lots is proposed to be 127 feet instead of 150 feet. And as we mentioned at the last meeting, this is to provide additional buffering between the Cobblestone Golf Course and the rear yards of the existing, or the proposed, single-family lots. As such, we request that the planning board modify the clustering provisions that were established for the existing adjoining lots as part of Cobblestone Creek development to allow a minimum lot depth of 127 feet for these two proposed lots. With regards to utilities, both lots will be served by public water via new water service connections to the existing MCWA public water main, which is located along the north side of Cheshire Ridge. And connections to the existing public gravity sanitary sewer main and storm sewer main along the south side of Cheshire Ridge are also proposed via new sanitary and storm laterals. For stormwater management, the proposed soil disturbance for the two single-family lots is under an acre. Therefore, New York State Speedy's general permit coverage for discharges from construction activity is not required, nor are any post, new post-construction stormwater management facilities required for the New York State DEC Stormwater Management Design Guidelines. The sketch plan application was received, or received an acknowledgement of a complete application for this project from this board on August 26th. Since then, we did receive minor comments from both the town engineer and town staff, to which we responded to in a letter dated yesterday, October 14th. We also submitted a PDF of the updated subdivision plans, which have addressed the town comments, and that was emailed to the town yesterday. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any of your questions on this application.
Joe, this is a public hearing? Yes, it is. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we will open the floor to the public once we've had a chance to run through some preliminary questions. Joe?
All right, well, I'm going to jump right into it.
Okay.
I'm looking at the code enforcement comments about the variance granted for the three-foot setback on the property line. Property on the current. It's unfortunate. It appears that.
Microphone.
It appears that the proposed 20-foot setback is going to leave 23 feet between the homes, but it's not a lot. I notice also in the comments back from BME Associates that the additional side setback allows for the existing pine trees along the common lot line to remain. At a minimum, I would like to see a requirement that not only are they allowed to maintain or remain, but be maintained and replaced if they died. I think it's unfortunate that there's no agreement between the property owner and Cobblestone, but I think the variance was granted. One of the rationales was that the property adjacent to the southeast side, southeast side lot line was to be permanent open space. So I think there's an expectation by the property owner that that would be maintained. So I'd like to see some accommodation, and again, as a minimum, that those language be addressed to maintain those trees.
Okay.
Other than that.
That's one of the reasons why we included the expanded side setback to accommodate the trees that were planted in the Cobblestone Creek Common Area. So those will remain, they're proposed to remain on the subdivision plans as well.
So they'll, but they'll be part of the parcel?
They'll be part of Lot 1, correct? Proposed Lot 1.
Anything else, Joe, before I?
No, that's, that's the one thing that stands out for me.
Okay. I, my biggest problem with this is the three-foot setback to the house. And there's a concrete walk that comes off the house, at least on one of these drawings, right near one of the trees. And what happens to that if they don't, if the property line is not offset? And I realized that there was a, basically an effort to give five feet of, of that parcel to that property owner, and that property owner chose not to accept that, asked for more, I forget what it was, 10 or 15 feet. And that fell through. Who owns the trees? What happens to them? How do you, if, I mean, the person in the house, the, the, right, is that? Owns, did all this landscaping off of their property? And includes space up where the cable box is and everything else. And now their landscaping on common property is, will be technically owned by the next parcel over. So.
Correct, and that's why this application is on everything possible to accommodate the existing trees, the existing landscaping, the existing hill and berm there.
Sure.
The grading accommodates it, um, the existing vegetation, the trees, the landscaping are all proposed to remain. The grading accommodates it, the expanded 20-foot side setback, plus the house is even over, um, in the, an additional amount beyond that too, um, on this, on the proposed, um, subdivision plan, so.
But we get this, we got another dispute among next-door neighbors in the other part of the town recently that the person built retaining walls or stone walls and landscaping and everything else that is now, and cut down trees frankly, is now on another parcel. And there was no change, it was just that person did that. Well, in this case, our parcel one is gonna own those two pine trees and some of the landscaping that now invades that parcel. To me, this is untenable to leave it that way, and I know you kind of agree, that's why you put, you know, offered the extra five feet and that wasn't acceptable. So I'll, I'll give you a chance to say, you know, speak to it, obviously. So, and actually, uh, Mr. Freitas, is that, I, I'm sorry? Freitas, okay, sorry. Um, if you'd like to speak or have some comments about that, I'd love to hear it. Come on up and name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, my name's Dan Freitas and I do live at one Sheffield, um, just west of the, uh, parcel one that we're referring to. And I think you articulated well my concern. Um, I would add in that I really only have three feet off the base of my house, so I could barely step on to my own property just coming out of my door, out of my garage. So I think a variance was issued when the house was built. I think assuming that, that property next to me would always stay open and there wouldn't be an issue there, but that's changing now. So I think that, um, you know, the three feet is an issue for me.
So if they offered five feet, bring clear, you didn't want that?
Well, I was concerned that that didn't cover the, the trees and I do have, um, some landscaping in the back. You can't, you can see it there where a good portion of that, it would be on the, the parcel one, uh, property. So that was my concern, that the five feet helped, but it didn't, it didn't cover the full trees and it didn't cover the berm in the back.
Okay, um, when you requested additional space, was there, how was that addressed?
Um, no response, um, although, other than I did get a, a formal registered, um, letter, uh, stating that, um, they offered the five feet. I rejected it and at this, at that point, they were gonna rescind their five-foot offer and that's where we stand.
Okay, so. They just said it was unacceptable to go that far?
Correct.
And you get a chance, Ryan, to address that as well, but. Personally, I, you go ahead.
I, I just, just listening to the dialogue here, I'm just wondering if there isn't a potential solution by way of, uh, effectively like a private conservation easement whereby the neighbor could have, still enjoy the use of that vegetation, but it would technically be part of this parcel.
Who maintains it?
Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, who maintains that?
It would be in the, uh, agreement. Conservation easement agreement.
All right, anything's doable, but my personal opinion would be to have a lot line adjustment, so it's clean.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah.
But I don't.
I mean, the fact that it was supposedly gonna be open space in perpetuity and now we've got two building lots. Personally, wouldn't.
I, I, I agree.
Lot line adjustment.
But if they do, if they do that, then they've compromised that lot, right?
I, I don't know, not really.
Really, I mean, I don't see that as a major compromise on the part of the new proposed Lot One.
Okay. Just throwing it out there.
Understood, um, so I think I read, was it the five feet was a minimum that was required? That the club was offering?
Five feet would bring.
That's eight feet, right?
I'm not gonna get that over there.
Yeah, you need to be, sorry, Ryan.
Oh, sorry. So for the approved section four lots, they had a minimum side setback of eight feet. So with the house being three foot off the side setback line, the, the gift of the five-foot strip of land would bring that house back into compliance with the, um, approved bulk lot standards for section four of Cobblestone Creek.
So what was the reason for the size of that lot to begin with? The one that's vacant at the moment and that's wants, you wanna cut into two? Do we know why it was that exact width?
I do not.
Happened.
Okay.
Um, so we obviously did widen the lots out and part of the thought was that we are requesting that they're not as deep. Um, as the code allows, we're looking for that variance on the depth of lot. And the idea was to really widen those houses out, so widen the lots, increase the setback, so we could have a wider, not as deep home on the house, just so it keeps it away from that golf course. Um, so that was the idea of the site plan, was to widen the houses. Um, the idea with the five-foot gift, obviously of the land, was to bring it right back into compliance that if there was never a variance granted there, now they have the eight-foot side yard that was on the original site plan. Uh, I understand the challenge of the trees and the landscaping that's now on the other property. But really, at the end of the day, the, everything's been planted on land that Cobblestone owns. Um, so I mean, it's not the club's fault or anybody else's fault that, so, not that you did it, but somebody along the line planted landscaping on property they don't own. I mean, that's, that's the unfortunate thing, that there's a lot of landscaping that somebody planted on land that wasn't theirs.
Yeah.
So now we're trying to figure out how to work around it. I thought the club was generous in just saying, you know, you had a, a variance when the home was built that was granted and we'll give you five feet. The unfortunate breakdown was that, you know, the guys at the club, the board, sent a text, um, to try to get together and talk about additional footage beyond the five feet. And I'm not sure if you didn't receive it, but there was never a response there and that's where it kind of broke down. Um, so, you know, that was a thought, and at this point, we have rescinded that five feet. Um, I just talked to the guys in the board, um, and we would put that five feet back there. If we wanna move that lot line by five feet and make it an eight-foot side yard setback, as if there was never a variance granted, then we're right back to no grant, variance being granted as far as the spacing and the, the sidewalk on the side of the property and everything now is back on land that he owns. Um, the trees, obviously, I, I agree that you put something in there that we're doing everything we can to preserve those trees. Um, but at the end of the day, it's landscaping that was planted on property that somebody didn't own.
So the five feet, if you put it, moved it over, those trees would still be off of that, off of one.
Some would be back, I mean, some would be, I'm not sure where exactly if it fall, if it captures a tree or two, but.
They would be off, I measure.
Still be off onto the other property.
It looks that way, yeah.
And it's.
And the berm in the back, it still would not.
It still would be off of your property?
I mean, it's unfortunate we're getting hung up on somebody planted landscaping where they shouldn't have, on property they didn't own.
Which is a fair point, but according to the code officer, this was also intended to be permanent open space. So two wrongs, I guess, we have.
I mean, yeah, obviously I understand that, but I mean, it's, it's unfortunate that obviously Cobblestone's always owned the land and never granted position to have, you know, permission to have landscaping put there. So.
Fair point.
So. And I think, I, I personally, it was a very fair offer to say there was a variance granted and we'll give you five feet of land for free, as if there was never a variance offered. And now you're right back in conformance with where the rest of them are and we're also providing a much larger side yard setback that theoretically the house could be 16 feet apart with two eight-foot side yards. And now we have a 20-foot side yard.
And, and you mentioned that you wanted to be able to put a wider house in because you couldn't go as deep, right?
Well, we're trying to, you know, make the house fit so that, you know, if, if we're concerned about, we don't wanna get too close to the golf course in the back.
Right.
Then we'd rather make the houses wider and not as deep, and that's what this offers, is that larger width.
And it looks like the rectangle you've shown, I have no idea if that would satisfy the wider house or is it just there for image? But, I mean, you have a lot of room between that and the 20-foot setback line, so.
Yeah.
There's, it's not like you're, you moved it five feet. And now you have a 15-foot side setback?
Sure. But he would own his five, he would own that footage and have his sidewalk and everything back on property, you know?
To me, it's untenable to leave the line the way it is, if you put a house there, because you can't even, you know, maintain. It maybe it's not on your property, but just to mow the lawn along the house or even landscape, you, you, two, three feet is nothing.
Well, that was the thought of the original offer, was to give that five feet back and now it's back to the original setback that was required of eight feet.
Okay, I guess we can kind of talk around this all day, but.
Sure.
In, in other words, could you live with five feet?
What if we were to shrink the?
Step up to the mic, so just make sure you're there.
What if we were to shift the side, the setback on the other side? Um, so move the lot line over it and then shift the.
Well, on the one side, it shows 15-foot side setback. On this, on your side, it shows 20-foot side setback. So if you made it 15-foot side setback, if you, if you look on the, sorry, I do have a laser. Right there it says 20, right here it says 15. So I'm not sure why it's different, but, um, maybe it's for that, that newest subdivision, if you will. So if you made that 15 and you moved this five feet over, it's not ideal, but it, it could work. So I'm talking this through, I'm not trying to force something on you, but.
And the idea of the extra space on that side was to leave room for the trees and the landscaping, kind of what was going on on that side. So that was the idea of pulling ourselves.
Yeah.
It was, with that property in mind, was to pull ourselves in that direction.
I suspect whoever buys that parcel is gonna maintain the yard and the trees will stay there.
Yeah.
And we can grandfather them in, you'll have the enjoyment of seeing them, they just won't be on your parcel, but they aren't now, actually, so.
And to your point, it's, it's not unusual to put a condition that those trees remain, is it? Sorry, it's not unusual to have a condition that those trees remain, um, on the parcel and.
We try to save trees where we can.
We're doing something new, we tried to accommodate that in the first place. We are on the same page.
Okay. All right, let's, is there anything else you'd like to say? Okay, all right, is it, it is, we'll give you a chance to, everyone a chance to come up. Is it Jermaine to the property line that you have a question on or something else?
I've been to a town.
Okay.
It just got me here.
All right, we will give you, everyone, an opportunity. Um, is there any other questions the board has about the property line and the offsets and things like that?
No.
No. Okay, anyone else from the public would like to speak or ask questions? Ma'am, you want to step right up to the microphone, yes you do, name and address and whatever question or comment you might have.
Hi, my name's Julie Posella, I live at Five Barch in Dune Rise. I've lived there about eight years and with this property, when we moved there, I couldn't believe when we looked across and there was this little gem of openness. I didn't know the story behind it, but my family and friends that have come here, they're like, how can you be so lucky not to have house, 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 house? And have this little gem here. And I know it's just a golf course, but there's also wildlife and that's been open for so long that I've seen deer, babies, everything else, and they've been dependent and part of that area as well, 'cause it's been there for so long. And, um, and I hate to say this, but on the 15th hole, millions of golf balls go way over. Probably on the first, on the first home, so whoever's gonna take that home is gonna be loaded with golf balls, that's all I can say. I've seen it and it's crazy, but I just wanna say I'm sad that two homes are going in. I wish there could have just been one home to make it a little more doable, 'cause I'm gonna be looking at that and I'm gonna be sad when all those trees are down, the vegetation is gone and there's gonna be two homes crammed in there where maybe there could have been one nice one. But I understand all the points of view, but like I said, I've never been to a meeting before and this got me out tonight.
Okay.
So sorry, I'm nervous and everything.
No, you don't have to be nervous at all, it's just a conversation we're having.
I love, I love my home, I love the view and, um, this kind of devastated me a little bit, so that's all, sorry.
Cobblestone Association, I believe, that's trying to.
Thank you for listening.
You're welcome, thank you for coming up, yes ma'am.
I am Mary Jo Richards, I live at 11 Cheshire Ridge, which is on the other side of those open lots. Um, first of all, I don't have a problem having a house put there, I don't. But my, I'm just wondering why it's taken 40 years to sell those lots. Originally, on our plans, it's forever wild, that's designated. So why was it designated forever wild and now all of a sudden, it's not forever wild? I just kind of wanna know the reasoning behind that.
Thank you.
Ask her a question?
Yeah, sure, Wes might have a, you.
I have a question for you on, on one of the comments that you just had. You mentioned that you have a, you have a plan that identifies this area as a forever wild?
The, the original plans for our house, when we.
For your house?
Yeah, we're the third owners, so we had the original plans and there is a map.
Yeah.
Which shows our house and then it shows that lot and it says forever wild on it.
Was that an editorial by the person providing the map or is it actually on the original survey plan?
Yeah, I guess, I guess, it would be interesting if that was a marketing map for home sales or if it was something different.
I'm Mike Richards, her husband, and we do have a map that does say forever wild. Now, I believe it was Wellmont, the original owner of 11 Cheshire Ridge, that had the map prepared. I mean.
Yeah.
Obviously someone did the survey, but I could certainly bring that to anybody that wants to see it.
If you have, I think it would be interesting to look at if you have that, so that.
I do.
The, I have, I, I think we have a copy of the initial subdivision map and, and what I've seen, this area is not in any type of conservation easement, so, um, I'd be interested to, to see your, your map to see if it was somehow related to the subdivision or if it's something that was a marketing piece of some sort.
Uh, it looked pretty official, I don't think it's a marketing piece.
Okay.
Well, it would be useful to have that as part of our review.
Comes the historian.
Oh, here comes Peter.
Comes the old guy.
You can wait a minute. Now, my, my other question is, our landscape that was put in by the gentleman that we bought the house from doesn't cumber about three feet of, um.
Next parcel?
The next parcel. And it is the five pine trees that I have that divides my house from that parcel that I am concerned about, even though they're on my property. I don't wanna see somebody come up to me and say, you gotta cut the, the branches off because it's over there.
Yeah.
I'd like to see something written into, whatever you decide, that that three-foot of landscape in the back of my property isn't going to be displaced or I'm gonna have any problems with those trees.
Well, that's an interesting perspective on what can you do with your neighbor's branch.
My next question is, who do I bring this map to?
I bring it to Lisa, she will distribute it to the town engineer and all of us on the board.
Very good.
Well, she can make a copy.
I don't need to keep it, I can just take a copy if you bring it into the planning building department.
I'll drop it off tomorrow. No, 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 I'll bring it in.
I will copy and give it back.
All right, thank you.
Hey, yes ma'am.
My name is Leah Theodoratos, I live at 18 Cheshire Ridge, which is up the street. So I first wanna say, uh, whether this lot stays forever wild, one house or two houses built on it, doesn't impact me, doesn't impact my property. But I do wanna say, the lot is .74 acres, which is not a particularly big piece of property. And I just wanna say, I think it's a little ambitious to try to put two houses on this lot versus one house. I think if instead one house, if, if the plan is gonna move forward, then the Planning Board would, would approve putting a house on this former lot that was designated to be forever wild. One, one house would be better because then that would also satisfy Mr. Fre- Freitas, I don't know if I'm pronouncing his name right. Mr. Freitas and Mike, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name. That, that we would alleviate the issues with the, with the side lots and the encroachment of, you, you know, the additional landscaping done. The, the other thing I'm also concerned with, all those houses built on that side of Cheshire Ridge and even probably the ones across the street, even though some across the street are bigger. But the ones on this side were built probably 15 years ago plus. So even though they're not identical homes, they each have their unique characteristics. But, but there is a, a, a common thread of how these houses were built. The houses that I see built today are built very differently. And if you have these two lots, um, on, on this .74 acre, acre property, they're gonna be very different from, from the houses that were there. And that's gonna be changing the character of the neighborhood. And I, you know, obviously they will probably be two. And I, you know, obviously they will probably be two stories high, but I've seen some of these two-story high houses that, that look much, because they're, they're more compact, they look much taller, and I don't think that would fit in. The house that's one, one Sheffield house, beautiful, beautiful brick house, and I think anything that is not really brick or stone house put next to him is, is really going to change the character and not good, look good. And also the two property owners adjacent to this lot, they bought these houses, were, were told, and, and even if they weren't told, but they saw that this was an empty lot. So now if two houses are put up there, that's going to reduce their property values, you know, in, in the long run. And also, you know, one comment that was made, I believe it was by Mr. Barbado, where he says he wants to make the house fit in the lot. And to me, that's very telling because you want to make it fit in, in the lot. So, so that, I, I don't think it should be two houses. It really should be one, one house if, if, if anything. And I think that, that would really solve all, all the problems. And another, another question I have, and, and it might be too preliminary at this point, but who's going to build the houses? Are these lots going to be sold to somebody who's going to then build the house? Or is it the, the club that's going to build the house? Because that can also change the type of house that's there. Because, you know, if a developer's building the house, you know, he's maybe building more of a cookie cutter type of house, where somebody buys the lot, they're going to be more interested in building a lot, you know, to their personal preferences and will want it to, to fit in more with the surrounding properties. So that's really all I wanted to say tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Pete will come up in a second and address the forever wild statement, but I'd just like to come back to the lot area and then point out that the approved Section 4 lots had a minimum lot size of .326 acres. The smallest lot that we're proposing is .364, so it's larger than the minimum lot size approved for Section 4. That was also one of the reasons why gifting beyond the five feet, we didn't want to do that because we wanted to keep the lots still in compliance with the previously approved Section 4 lots adjoining it.
Yes, Peter Vars. So just the history as it relates to the statements on forever wild. When Cobblestone Creek was approved in 1988, it was approved, as Ryan stated, as a cluster subdivision. At that time, the Town of Victor did not have an open space requirement, but the clustering provisions took the conventional yield of the 282 units, created the cluster subdivision, and created the golf course lands. Those golf course lands were identified as being lands of Cobblestone Creek. In other words, the club was going to own those lands. That was their designation. Then, when Section 4 came in, there was reconfigurations up, up in the hill in Sections 4, 5, and 6. At that time, because of the reconfiguration, we were modifying the approved preliminary plan, we were required at that time to provide 25% open space because the code had been updated and it was determined that, that we had to provide 25%. So my, where I'm going with this, so 20, they took the areas of Sections 4, 5, and 6, which was just over 100 acres, established there needed to be a 25% open space set aside for that. A conservation easement was put around primarily the main pond area. That is the only designated open space within Cobblestone Creek that is filed in the county clerk's office. Anything else that is not private, individual house lots are the lands of the club. Okay?
So if it's lands of the club, Peter, and these are lands of the club currently that the club wants to sell, is that the way I'm seeing this whole thing?
To subdivide and sell, yes.
To subdivide and sell. It is open space, but it's club space, correct?
Right.
I know it's not, like you said, characterized as, what the way we think of open space now or...
Correct. There was no provision as part of any approval process or any provision made to designate it forever open space.
Okay.
Okay? It's just, and, and it's just as, you know, the fact too, of, of going from 282 to 270 because of the reconfiguration, there was additional non-developed lands created up on top of the hill, up by 16 and 17. It was when those lots were created through the wooded areas there. They, they just didn't do all of the grading and clearing that the preliminary plan called for, and that's where they gave up lots in order to preserve some of that natural terrain there.
So that was my, leads me to my next question. Are the number of houses that have been built up there more the same or less than what was originally approved?
So the original approval...
As a density, I guess you'd call it?
Yeah, the original approval was for 282 homes. And my under, I believe where we're at now is, is 270. Okay? So there are 12 lots still available per the original overall preliminary approval of Cobblestone Creek. And that's why, so, and really what the, so in essence, what this club is doing is really taking two lots that were up in Section 4, 5 area and bringing them down here is really what, what's, what's transpired.
So is there any other room in the lands of Cobblestone Creek that could be added lots in the future? Hard to say this right, but...
I don't know that answer off the top of my head. You know, I couldn't answer that one way or the other.
Is there any other space like this, for instance? Or, or lands that no one's put a house on yet?
Right. I couldn't answer that off the top of my head, to be honest with you.
Okay.
In that regard.
Interesting.
So Joe, just, I mean...
Go ahead.
In principle, and again, that may not be officially designated, but I do have a hard time right there. There's 12 available building lots. Adjacent neighbors were led to believe, right or wrong, that this was open space and would remain that way. We now want to put lots in. I just find that a tough sell.
Okay. There? Single lot or...
I, I think a single lot is proposed by the one resident would be a reasonable compromise that could accommodate all the feedback we've heard from, from the residents.
I wouldn't want to be anywhere near that corner when I'm hitting the ball.
You'd have to put a big net up behind you.
Yeah, right, yeah. It's like, or I wouldn't want to be in that backyard if somebody else...
Shower proof glass.
So that, that's one of the reasons why we reduced the, the depth from 150 to 127. We've also, in addition...
I'm not sure that would have a material impact on the number of balls hitting the house.
Exactly. Hang on a second.
And, and in addition, the rear setback has also been increased from the requirement of 20 feet per the previously approved Section 4 lots on the adjacent side. We've increased it to 30 feet. So if you look where the proposed house is on Lot Number 2, it's actually slightly behind 11 Cheshire Road, the corner of it.
Yeah. It's, it's depicted that way as a rectangle, but you never know what they're going to end up with when they actually finish the house.
And to go to one lot, you know, if you look, the house, the lots on either side are less in area than the two lots that we're proposing. So it's not out of characteristic of the neighborhood by any means to approve two lots that comply with the approved Section 4 bulk lot standards.
I was going to say, one Sheffield seems to be awfully narrow lot to begin with. And I don't know if the area is less than, I mean, how close is it to that minimum lot size? Peter might be able to answer that question. Do you have a...
It's...
Sorry. Just want to get it on the mic.
I believe it's .28 acres.
Okay. And what was the minimum, Peter?
.36.
.36?
Yeah, it's, uh, one second. The minimum area is .326. It's 14,000 square feet.
Yeah. So if you expanded lot at one Sheffield, now I'm just thinking out of the box here, but if you expanded that a lot enough to get it to the minimum requirement, I mean, that's why I asked the original question. Why was this one parcel the dimension it is? What, why is it there? I mean, it's not like the tractor trailer's going through there or maintenance or whatever.
I know that answer too.
Okay, Peter.
Okay. Um, is, so we have to recall Cobblestone Creek has grown over decades through various market changes.
Yeah.
Okay? So Sections 1, 2, and 3 came off of Victor Egypt Road. If you, if you go into Section 1, if you go up Moraine Point and, and Section 2, and those, those lots are larger, larger homes. As they moved out across to the west side into what is Section 4, 5, there was a, a dynamic shift in the housing market. I believe it was, that was the how, this SNL crisis of the mid 90s, okay? Point being is, is then Cobblestone changed their approach. When they first started, they had a selection of six builders that could build homes. If you wanted a lot in Cobblestone, you had to pick one of these six builders. Due to market forces and the need to move the product, they changed and, and the point is, is then they went to a smaller footprint lot. And thus, that's what led to the revisions to Sections 4, 5, and 6. That's when patio homes became popular. And so if you were to compare the Section 4, 5, and 6 maps with the approved 88 overall preliminary plan, you would see the lots in 45. They compacted the development because they went, they went to a, a different style lot, different style home. The planning board, as part of that reapproval for 4, 5, and 6, established those lot areas because it was done to meet market demand at that time. Okay?
It, it still doesn't say, why is this thing, that this was never meant to be a building?
It was shoehorned in, basically.
I mean, it's like, it's too narrow, we can't use it, so once you get to a point where the depth is minimum, then you can start putting more houses again. Is that the way it go, went? You're asking for a, a less than, a lot that's less...
On these two lots here?
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Well, these two lots here, there, it's a function of establishing the lot areas for a footprint that will work, which these do.
Well, I'm talking about why is, you're asking for relief to the depth, which is 100, less than 135 or 40?
150 is required.
Yeah. So now it's only a 129. And maybe they didn't put them back then, any houses here, because it was just too shallow. But now you're asking to put houses because it's too shallow, but you're asking for relief.
I think the main point is that they're still complying with the minimum lot size. That's, that's the most important factor. We're providing a buffer in the rear yard from the golf course appropriate.
Okay. I... We're getting a little long in this conversation with it, but...
I don't, I don't know if we can go any further until we know for sure whether that's a survey map or a marketing map. And in any event, if I'm purchasing a property and the realtor or the club or whoever represents to me that the lot I'm buying is going to be adjacent to open space, I'm not going to be, well, maybe I should be, but I'm not necessarily going to be asking for a survey map or something that, that proves that. So I, I, I have problems not only with the setbacks and all, but also with, if you want to call it, the moral or ethical aspect of, of purchasing property with an understanding that it's going to be one way and then being surprised with it being another way. I've, I've got a problem with that.
Lot? Lots?
I think you, you guys covered it. I don't have anything more to add.
Public hearing's still open, so I'll get you in a minute.
I don't have anything, I don't, I don't have anything more to add. You guys have...
Yes, sir.
Got disgusting.
When I bought this lot, going on six years, Pete Palermo was my realtor. He'd have sold a number of houses in Cobblestone Creek Development. He mentioned to me, said that lot next to you will never be developed because the club did a study. The average slicer hits the ball into that lot. That's why the club will never develop that. Now, Rick Leisure was the agent representing the seller. He said the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, and I think the town cut the grass here probably a month ago. I took my grandson over there. This is the first parcel, parcel one, I think we're talking about. He found 12 golf balls.
What I would recommend, should we move forward with this application, and I think we can move forward with this application, make it a condition of approval that the subdivision plat be verified, that the, that the, that the lands are lands of Cobblestone Creek and not lands that were ever reserved or meant for reservation and a permanent conservation easement.
Well, honestly, we really can't move forward with this, not just because of the discussion we just had, but the property line for Mr. Freitas? Mr. Freitas? Okay. Needs to be resolved. It's not, as far as I know, it's not resolved now. I know you just said you've been authorized to offer that five foot back again, but I, I would like to see that formalized before we move forward with this.
We're fine making that a condition of approval too, to submit the updated subdivision plat as well.
Yeah, that, that one could, but, but it changes the site plan. You know, we've been looking at a, a site plan here that has one property line and if it's a condition of approval, then I don't have...
The house setbacks wouldn't change at all. It would just be, they, the setback would remain in the exact same location. The setback distance from the property line would just be adjusted from 20 feet to 15 feet. It would still protect all of the trees and vegetation along the common property line with one Sheffield.
There are the comments about, is it appropriate for two houses rather than one house?
Yeah, and I, I guess I would just refer back to that we're, we're complying with all the bulk lot standards, including lot area.
And then that goes back to what was this parcel promoted as, I guess?
What was the intent of the parcel?
Yeah. And...
Seems to me if it was intended to be building lots, it would have been denoted that at the time.
Well, and honestly, I think I would, I'm uncomfortable moving forward with this with those conditions. I think if we have you back at the next meeting with these items resolved, Mr. Freitas also, and us having a chance to look at those, you know, at the original site plan, how it was conveyed, not conveyed, but promoted, I guess, you know?
Yeah, it kind of sounds like the planning board wants to give some further study to the application and also maybe wants a little bit more time to think about some of the public comments that have been shared tonight. So, you know, to me, it sounds like the planning board's not ready to act.
Yeah.
Great.
So I, I don't feel comfortable moving forward. I think you're hearing the board saying the same thing. I think those two major things, from what the public has been saying, next door neighbors and in the development are important, so want to make sure that we give them the right consideration. So it's the first time we've had a chance, honestly, to hear that, so. I think we'll, unless you have anything else you want to convey, I'm, we're going to move on.
We're fine tabling this application until we provide further information on this.
All right. Thank you. All right, folks. We have four more, but three of them are removed, so. One more. High Point Business Park PDD Amendment. Thank you all for coming. If you're leaving or attending, we have this one.
There it is. Last one, not least.
Is that why you're here? I thought you were here for... I thought you were a moral support for Ryan. Okay.
Pass it down?
Yep. Good evening again.
Yes.
All right.
I do. Yep.
So at High Point Business Park, this amendment is not a public hearing discussion. Commercial Street Partners are proposing to amend the PDD to allow for 71 townhouse units, one four-story apartment building with 100 units within Section 2.4. Section 1 remains as two three-story apartment buildings with 42 units each. Total number of units proposed is 255 units with a clubhouse. Previously approved Land Development District included 14 three-story apartment buildings consisting of 294 total residential units, including a clubhouse with pool. I assume the proposed clubhouse does not have a pool, Peter?
The, um, no, it will not.
Okay. Thank you. It's, it was, that's how it's specified here, is without a pool. A reduction of 39 units is proposed with this modification. Floor's yours.
I have nothing to add. I just know we covered this last, at last meeting, and I believe what we were here this evening is hopefully for the planning board to complete their process at this stage, which... stage, which is to make a recommendation back to the town board for the amendment.
Um, I was not at the last public hearing, public meeting, or planning board meeting. Um, when I had a chance to look through this, I had a, my biggest concern was at the top, where a lot more tree areas being removed near Mr. Rueta's property. And I, I know the building won't be, buildings won't be three, four stories or whatever they are.
Correct.
They'll be single floor, two-story buildings?
So, in that area, um, where there is some additional clearing, uh, being proposed, is those were originally, uh, excuse me, originally approved for three-story apartment buildings, those are being replaced with single-story fee simple townhomes. So while there may be some clearing being removed, the actual massing and the height of the structures is being dynamically reduced.
All right, my laptop's frizzing out here from getting to that area where it shows green space or trees being removed. Napoli is not playing nice. Oops, not it. Thing open. All right, Peter.
Peter, I have a question.
Yes?
In your letter, it said it included fourteen three-story apartment building. That's correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had that right.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Fourteen? I see.
That was the original.
Oh, okay.
Yes. That's what's currently approved, actually. Yes.
All right, I see three multi-story buildings, I think four-story, correct?
No, we're only proposing one four-story building.
Oh, that's up in the northeast quadrant?
Yep.
Okay. That's the L.
The L-shaped building, correct.
And the others are three-story? The other two?
Um, so, if we look at this map, I'll start at the bottom and move up. So, um, oh wait, yes, thank you.
You have one.
Yes, I do. So, um, Valantown Road, the road obviously is in.
Yep.
This is section one, which is approved for eighty-four units. It's two buildings, forty-two units each, three stories. That received final approval from this board in twenty-twenty-two. That approval has since expired, you know, the timestamp on that. So as part of this application, we're requesting reapproval. If, if the town board takes their action that we hope they take, we would be back here to request, uh, final site plan reapproval for section one. There is no change proposed here from what has been previously approved. Sections two and four, those were where three-story, uh, apartment buildings were proposed. These are now proposed as fee simple townhomes. They will be for sale, uh, single-story townhomes. Then what we did here, and it, there's the, a depression here, this is a proposed four-story apartment building. It'll have underground parking, uh, hundred and twelve units.
Would that be ground level below all the three other floors?
It's utilized, uh, it's, no, it'll be, it'll be a basement level. It's below ground in theory, so it's four stories plus a basement.
Okay.
Is maybe the way to think about it. Four stories plus a below-ground parking garage.
Okay. So, again, this space right here.
Mm-hmm.
Section four, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That, that is a considerable amount of removal of buffer between Mr. Rueta's property, which is here, and he was here at multiple meetings during the apartment building application with, where they were like one, two, three buildings, I think, right in this area. It were three-story perhaps. Um, but the tree, that density really helped shield his house from all those large buildings. I'm a little concerned that this is very little buffer remaining for these townhomes, especially these right here.
So, two things. First of all, understand that this is a concept plan. Obviously, coming back for site plan approval, there would be landscaping plans, uh, prepared, which would include perimeter buffing, buffer plantings. And more importantly, it's a lot easier to buffer a single-story structure.
Mm-hmm.
And a three-story structure. So, I, I would say, you know, and I've, I've read, obviously, the draft resolution, and we understand this process very well, in the fact that this recommendation this evening does not set this plan in stone.
Okay.
That we, and it, and it, like I said, it's in here, that we know when we come back, there is still site planning to be done with this board.
All right.
So, we understand our responsibility, um, as it relates to, uh, addressing issues and, and right, the long history of this property.
Yeah. My concern and our responsibility is to make sure that we don't cast in stone everything that you see on this map. And I, I know you get that, but, and that's, that's why I'm voicing my opinion about this right now. Um, so, you know, he may be fine with it, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, I certainly want to hear from Mr. Rueta, because we bent over backwards, I think, to try to make sure that everything was, of his concerns were addressed, and it was a big subdivision development, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's my opinion. I don't know. If you guys obviously saw it at the last meeting, so, any comments, thoughts?
So, we did go into detail around the, uh, the different view sheds, and, and actually, again, I think that this is a better fit from an elevation and exposure to surrounding properties than what was previously approved.
Yeah. Is, are those townhomes, do they have a view, or is it the trees are there so high that they can't see over the trees to get a view of the valley?
Can't see over the trees.
No, they won't.
Yeah, okay.
It'll, it'll probably be single-story, so they'll probably to the peaks be twenty-eight feet at most.
Okay.
So, you know, they won't have a second story outlook, so it'll all be first-level living.
I mean, looking at the aerials, it's a pretty densely wooded area, so.
And an overall reduction in number of units to which.
Sure. And that's good. Yeah, all of that, that's good.
If you recall, Joe, the original plan, there was a property owner here that had issues with views, and we, we believed that the reduction from three stories to one would actually alleviate more of his concerns.
That's who I was talking to, Mr. Rueta. He's right here.
Yeah, I, I think he's actually more down here.
Hmm, pretty sure that's his house right there. But, okay.
Nonetheless, yeah, we, we thought that the reduction from three to one would be useful.
I've been up there at least once to look at that from his perspective, so. Okay.
There's cross-sections on these slides, but I think it was more for the four-story.
Correct.
Well, it does show a long section.
Yep.
Where it shows the valley and the four-story and, and the singles.
Right.
I get that.
When we do the site plan application, we can be able to provide comparative sections or, or visual simulations. That, that's easy enough to do.
All right.
If you want help reading that, just give me the high sign and I'll pick up for a brief.
Anything else from Wes, the board? I mean, this was.
So, what, what I've done, based on the feedback at the last planning board meeting, yeah, I assembled a draft resolution here that would essentially be the planning board recommendation back to the town board, recommending approval of the rezoning, PDD rezoning, right? And, um, there's some particulars in here, so I think it's worth, uh, I think it's worth reading through to be sure that you're comfortable with what it says, and, um, you know, you might have some comments, so.
All right. I guess I can go ahead and read this. Might sink in better. All right.
Your counterpart over here offered to.
He did.
It was just itching.
I'm, I'm.
I have a two-hour.
He says he likes to start meetings on time. How about ending them? Okay. So, I'll start, and if I get tired, you take over, Joe. How's that? Okay. This is the planning board recommendation to the town board for High Point Business Park PDD Amendment Woods at Valantown. It's an HOA lot. Whereas the Town of Victor, Town Board, I received an application on or about July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, seeking to amend the High Point Business Park Plan Development District Woods at Valantown, or formerly the HOA lot, in the Town of Victor, specifically the preliminary development plan that had been approved in relation to the area described in section two, eleven, twenty-seven, four, paragraph B three of the Town, Victor Town Code, and whereas described in the updated September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five petition and application material, the application proposes to amend the PDD to allow for two hundred and fifty-five market rate units consisting of seventy-one fee simple townhouse units and one four-story apartment building with one hundred units within sections two through four, and section one will remain as two three-story apartment buildings consisting of eighty-four units divided equally into forty-two units per apartment building as well as the clubhouse, and whereas the Town Board referred to the, the application to the Victor, Town of Victor Planning Board, and in accordance with the applicable requirements, the Planning Board has considered the proposed amendment to the PDD action in relation to the eleven criteria specified in section two, eleven, twenty-seven, D one, C of the Victor Town Code, as well as compared to the proposed PDD amendment to the PDD rezoning recommendation and findings of the Planning Board dated March thirteenth, twenty-eighteen. And whereas, on March thirteenth, twenty-eighteen, the Planning Board previously recommended to the Town Board that a PDD rezoning be approved that had anticipated fourteen fourteen-numbered new apartment buildings consisting of two hundred and ninety-four total residential units in place of the seventy-two townhouse units planned and approved in two thousand and five, with the proposed apartment buildings comprised of three-story buildings and constructed in locations where the previously approved two thousand and five plan showed townhouse buildings and proposing, uh, the construction of a residential clubhouse and pool, and whereas the total number of residential units proposed today is proposed to be reduced by thirty-nine units as compared to the twenty-eighteen plan, I put in here, and elimination of a pool. Whereas the Planning Board's current findings related, relative to the project associated with September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five petition are generally consistent with those specified in the Planning Board's March thirteenth, twenty-eighteen recommendations to the Town Board, but new findings are included herein. Now therefore be resolved with respect to the criteria number three, four, eight, and nine, as they are described in section two, eleven, twenty-seven, D one, C of the Victor Town Code. The Planning Board's current recommendation to the Town Board regarding the proposed PDD amendment hereby incorporates the following findings regarding consistency with existing zoning and planning, neighborhood character, traffic, and provision for sanitary sewer. So, uh, said paragraphs, uh, number three, the extent to which the plan departs from the zoning regulations formerly applicable to the property in question, including bulk density and permitted uses. Uh, chapter four of the town's adopted twenty-fifteen comprehensive plan discusses the anticipated build-out that has become regarded as an important benchmark, also detailed with chapter one, within chapter one, and recommends institution of a growth management program that states the following. It is recommended that the anticipated build-out, as it presently, as it is presently estimated, be adopted as target size. At the same time, the growth management program should not strictly preclude all actions that could be expected to increase the anticipated build-out. Instead, the program should require close monitoring of the build-out estimate and careful consideration and management of any actions that would, through rezoning or some other approval, potentially increase density as, so as to also inflate the anticipated build-out. Previously approved preliminary development plan, a component of the previous rezoning by the Town Board, anticipated two hundred and ninety-four units, and the proposed event, amendment would allow for two hundred and fifty-five units, results of decrease of, in a decrease of thirty-nine units. Proposed uses include a mix of apartment uses and single-family townhouse units. The proposed four-story apartment building is situated within the site at a lower elevation than other residential buildings associated within, with the project, and is not expected to be a structure that appears out of place in the context of the High Point Development. Uh, Mr. Limbeck, why don't you take number four?
Sure. The existing character of the neighborhood and the relationship beneficial or otherwise of the proposed development, um, to this neighborhood, as, as mentioned under findings for criteria number three above, the current proposal would decrease residential density by thirty-nine units compared to the previously approved plan. Although the residential density would decrease, it is noted that nominal increase in impervious area is expected, and a nominal decrease in green space as specified in the High Point Residential Comparison Tables submitted by the applicant. The project design will incorporate stormwater mitigation as necessary to accommodate these nominal changes.
You can keep going if you like.
Okay. Eight, the amount of traffic generated at peak hours and the provisions for adequately handling such volumes, with particular reference to points of ingress and egress, potential hazards such as inadequate site distances and intersection design, and the nature and suitability of the connecting street or highway systems to absorb the anticipated changes. The approved two thousand and five FEIS contained required infrastructure improvements at the following locations, um, first Route ninety-six at Cobblestone Court slash Eastview Mall Intersection, second Route ninety-six at High Street Eastview Mall Intersection, and third High Street at Valantown Road Intersection. A traffic study was prepared for the two thousand eighteen PDD amendment that considered two hundred and ninety-four units, and the above-mentioned improvements have been completed. As the two thousand twenty-five proposal includes a reduction of thirty-nine units, proposed use will result in consistent traffic levels accepted as part of the two thousand eighteen PDD amendment. And nine, the provision for storm, sanitary, and solid waste disposal and other utilities on the property adjacent to the site as well as the site itself. Now, the sanitary sewer flow for the two hundred and ninety-four units was forty-five thousand one hundred gallons per day, uh, at GPD. Expected flows for the two hundred and twenty-five unit, or two hundred and fifty-five units in the clubhouse are forty-two thousand one hundred gallons per day, um, and that parentheses, seventy-five gallons per day per bedroom, and a thousand gallons per day for clubhouse, with a maximum daily demand of eighty-three thousand two hundred gallons per day. Although sanitary sewer pump station twenty-eight, uh, para PS dash twenty-eight improvements were completed in twenty-nineteen, the Planning Board suggests that the Town Board reconfirm that the town's sanitary sewer conveyance system, PS twenty-eight, and downstream to the wastewater treatment plant, as the capacity for the projected flows. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board recommends approval of the proposed PDD amendment and the Woods at Valantown Preliminary Development Plan, BME Project Number Two Eight Two Nine A Drawing Zero One, last revised July eighteen, twenty-twenty-five, drawn by BME Associates. And be it further resolved, the Town of Victor Planning Board hereby recommends that rezoning of the property, of the subject property to amend the Plan Development District include as a condition of rezoning provisions, A, preserving the Town Planning Board's discretion and flexibility during review and approval of the final development plan, to further consider environmental and other site constraints or factors, and to, um, I, um, make final determinations with respect to the final layout and configuration of all buildings, including building height, streets, parking areas, pedestrian amenities, setbacks, open spaces, screening, buffering, easements, and intersections, landscaping, and tree preservation, as well as signage, without regard to the specific layout depicted in the preliminary development plan, and it be it further resolved, those copies of all the planning board meeting minutes and these findings be forwarded to the Town Board for their use.
Thank you, Joe.
Hey, Joe, do you mind if I just clarify something? Wes, I'm pretty sure it's PS eighteen at the Beer Project, not PS twenty-eight, just a minor clarification.
My mistake.
No problem.
First twenty-eight. Twenty-eight Wendy's?
Correct.
Oh, used to people working.
Let's get those two confused myself.
It's only thirty, though.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Thank you, Keith.
That's second to last further resolved section, keeps it very flexible, so, thank you. All right. So, uh, anyone have any comments other than Mr. Maynard?
Peter, did you know it was PS eighteen? Not twenty-eight?
I do now. But it makes sense. PS nineteen's at, at Eastview, and this is the next one downstream, so.
Right, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Should know that.
Okay. So, uh, do I, I entertain a motion for approval?
I'll move.
I'll moves.
Second.
And Scott seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried four, zero.
Thank you.
Isn't it nice you got to stay for the whole meeting, Peter?
Exactly. And actually, I would like to say one thing. Um, at the beginning of the meeting, you, you mentioned about Ernie stepping down from the board, and I would just like to say, I've had the, I had the pleasure of working with Ernie, and, uh, he should be. the pleasure of working with Ernie, and he should be commended for his years of service. You know, he oversaw some dynamic and exciting growth, and he served this town well, and served this board well, and I just wish him the best, and like I said, he should be commended for his service, so.
Thank you, Peter.
I just wanted to say that.
That's, that's great.
Thank you.
And we certainly will forward that on to, to Ernie. And I had the pleasure of serving just as long as Ernie, because we both started on the same day on this board, so, it's been a while, and it's been great. So, with that, unless anyone else has anything, entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Al moves, Scott seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a great rest of your evening. It's an hour and a half, two hours left, right, Dave?
See you on Thursday.